Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Monday, January 22. This is a study session of the Minnetoka City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and we will go around the room and introduce everyone. We'll start with Serissa.
Serissa Falk, Senior Management Coordinator.
Mike Funk, City Manager.
Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1. Ooh, sorry.
Sorry, you're good.
Kimberly Wilburn, at large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
Brad Weersum, Mayor.
Kizzy Copley, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, at large.
Paula Romailly, Ward 3.
Marina Dama, Assistant City Manager. And we do have a candidate which I'm sure we'll introduce at the table.
Okay, very good. All right, so with that, we've done the introduction to the roll call. And business items are Board and Commission's interviews. Mr. Funk, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we do have a number of interviews scheduled. So in your staff report and in front of you is a reminder of that schedule. So we do have a full slate of candidates this evening. So we'll be interviewing positions for the Senior Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, and then the Economic Development Advisory Commission, or EDAC. But before we get into those, tonight is our first interview at 6:35 for our last remaining position or interviewee for the DEI Commission. And so Mayor, here in a second, we'll turn it over for that interview. And then I would just remind the council that Ms. Falk did send out an email to you this afternoon, and then also you have in your iLegislate the interview questions. So I assume, Mayor, perhaps you want to use the same format as last Wednesday for the interviews in terms of passing it off to council members to take their turns for the interview questions. So the DEI position, we do have the five questions. Those are consistent from what was asked of our candidates last Wednesday. And then we'll roll into the Senior Advisory Board interviews. We do have two questions for the interview pan -- or for the interviewees this evening. So those should go a little quicker than some of the other interviews, but there are two questions for that. And then with the Planning Commission and EDAC, there are four questions. So they do vary slightly, so you can't use the same set of questions for each group. So you would make sure they pointed out to you. And then we do have two cancellations. One was with the Senior Advisory Board. David Antonek, probably saying that incorrectly, but he -- that is a 7:35 interview person. They are -- they have canceled tonight's interview. And then the other one is, the last one listed for this evening for EDAC, Susan Shields. She has decided to pull out of the interview process. And then, do you have any other updates on those? Okay, so we have those two cancellations. And then with that, Mayor and Council, turned over to you for those two items. If we do end up making our way through the Senior Advisory Board interviews quicker than anticipated, we can always look to the other two agenda items to what --
Fill in.
-- fill in that space if we need to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Funk. Any questions, Council? All right, well, I think we are in a position to start with the DEI Commission interview. And so the candidate is, and I want to say this properly, so if I get it wrong, please correct me, Dennis Bell Montano Sosa.
(inaudible)
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having me.
Well, it's good to have you. And I want to make sure I pronounce your name properly. Is it Dennis Bell or Denise Bell?
Da, Dennis Bell.
Dennis Bell.
Dennis Bell.
Dennis Bell Montano Sosa.
Yes, Dennis Bell Montano Sosa.
Montano, okay. No squiggly -- squiggly mark over the N, I apologize.
(laughing)
Thank you, whatever.
(laughing)
I'm demonstrating my sense -- my cultural sensitivity here, I apologize.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Well, welcome and glad to have you here. And we will go down the line and introduce ourselves, the council members. And then we have a series of four questions for you, and we'll just try and move through the interview, and we're glad to have you here. So, Patsy, if you would start.
Hi, Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1. I use she/her pronouns, if you remember.
Kimberly Wilburn, at large, and she/her pronouns.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2, she/her.
And I'm Brad Weersum, I'm the mayor. I'm the only he-his here on the council.
I see that. Kizzy Copley, Ward 4, she/her.
Deb Calvert, at large, she/her.
Paula Romailly, Ward 3, and I'm she/her.
And, well, that's the council, and then we have, go ahead, well, we can introduce everybody, go ahead.
Serissa Falk, Senior Management Coordinator, she/her.
Hi, Mike Funk, City Manager, DEI.
And then I'm Marina Dama, and I'm the Assistant City Manager, and she/her.
All right, well, we'll just, we'll just, I'll just ask the questions for the council tonight, but we are, again, we're glad to have you here. And so the first question we have for you is, please tell us about yourself, your background, and what makes you the right person for a position on our DEI Commission?
Yes, my pleasure, and she/her too. Well, I would say there are three things that I -- probably the best ways to answer the question. One is because I'm an educator. The second one related to that is that I always, I have always worked in very diverse schools, I would say, like bilinguals or multilingual, with diverse students, basically. And the third is because of I really, really have this passion to cultivate awareness in the communities about, you know, people with different backgrounds, not just in schools, but in the community. I don't know if that answers the equation, but that's, I like to go like straight to the point without
We like that.
(inaudible) so much. And it's like this, this, and this. And because of, at some point of my life, I was there, like not knowing what to do, where to go, how to get involved in the community. And now, 20 years later, I have this passion to help others, to be aware.
Excellent. Well, thank you. So our next question is, Concerns of the Minnetoka City Code, Section, I'll dispense with that, Powers and Duties. And it talks about being an inclusive and equitable community for everyone who lives here. So please describe in your words what it is like to be an inclusive and equitable community for everyone who lives, works, or recreates in our city.
Yes, thank you. Well, inclusive and equitable communities, we, from education, that's something that we also address in our classrooms and in our schools. From the community perspective, to, I think that to build like an inclusive and equitable community, it should involve, it's my perspective here, but it should involve or address different aspects of the community. Like, it involves all people who live in the community together at some point, it's like everybody needs to know the values of the community and get together, but we need to involve all those aspects and people, different people in the community. It can go different ways, strategies, initiatives that we can take, but that's the main point. In education, we have this term that is equity, which is a little bit different than equality or equitable. I was taught at the school, like, you know, if you have a group of 20 students, but just try to think that, transport that to the community, it's pretty much the same concept. And there's a difference between equity and equality, because it's like, oh, you have a group of 25 students, and giving all of them the same thing, like same curriculum, teaching the same way, it is not really equity. Because of, it's not about giving everybody the same, it's more like, oh, I have choose for all my students, but they all have very different sizes. So you have to be intentional, and you have to target those differences to actually meet them. So that's, if you think of that in terms of the community, it's the same thing. It's like, it's like a learning experience between people living in the community, learning. It's like, and I would call it like intercultural learning, actually, as well. So that's the main point on that, because I think that's kind of overlooked sometimes. And it's like, oh, here's the event, everybody's welcome, but how do we actually target those people that, let's say, are in the position I was 20 years ago, like, what is that even about? How can I get there? I don't even speak English, those kind of things. And from my experience, those people have so much to offer to the community.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Our next question is, what is one initiative, policy, or strategy that you would want the Commission to implement within its first year?
I would say strategies, I mean, from my, from what I can contribute with, they should be around, in my case, around education and awareness. The strategies, I mean, the ones that I can share would be around education and awareness, around those two. It can be, for example, if we say awareness, it can be something even very informal, like an informal event, network event, sharing a meal, it can be something, from something very simple to, you know, like a large event and all of that, just to put different people together. And in terms of education, because I'm a Minnetoka resident, so I get all, you know, the magazines and everything, and when I look at those, I say, oh, there's an opportunity for this, for this, to put some, you know, some kind of resources and events, or even like chore courses, something like that, like in the summer, for example, that I think would benefit the community.
Great, thank you. Our last question for you is, based on your understanding of the Commission, what do you think will be an individual challenge for you and a challenge for the group?
Well, I don't know if at this point it would be a challenge, but I know it was. Maybe sometimes the way I speak, sometimes like the accent, that might, that's a challenge for some people, might be that, like from people who are listening to me. But maybe you don't, you say, oh, no, I can understand her very well. But I would say could be, could be. That's from people who are listening to me. And for me, I would say share all my ideas. It's not like I have all of them in my mind, but the way we put it, sometimes it's like it has an effect on the others. It's like, oh, but what is, I would need to find the best way to say, oh, this is the intention with this, this is the purpose. It's not just, oh, these are my ideas, it's kind of, probably that, because we always need to find the best, we need to be intentional and put it out there in a way that it is understood by your audience, so.
Well, thank you. Well, that's all we have for you tonight. It's a brief interview, but Dennis Bell, I said that right?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, good. I want to make sure I get it right. Well, thank you, well, thank you for being here tonight. And what our process is, is we are finishing our interviews tonight, we, everyone will turn in their impressions, and then you will be notified in the, in the not-too-distant future, in the next
Yeah, the next couple days, you'll be here for me. Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, so we'll get back to you, and thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And that's it?
Yes.
Have a good night.
You too, thanks.
(inaudible)
Linda in here? Are you Linda? Okay. Yeah. (inaudible)
Yes, yes, we did. So, the, we only have two questions for the
I would use this one.
Here, it's in the back.
No, I'm talking about for the
Yeah, we didn't, we did shorten it.
I'm Brad.
Yes.
Just real quick, Mayor and Council, not, the only thing I, the only reason I jump in real quickly is that when you're doing your introductions, you know, pronoun usage is your preference. And so we, staff, encourage you to use it for our DEI Commission interviews, because we really want to make sure we're having a welcoming space. We use our pronouns internally, you often will see it on our names in our email responses. And again, it's a choice of employees. A lot of employees do use their pronouns in our email addresses. As we talk DEI internally in the organization, we do use pronouns, and so it's really, at this point, as you go into now interviews for Senior Advisory and Planning Commission, EDAC, it's really your preference how you want to use them. So I just want to
Great.
...ensure there's a distinction there.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening and welcome. Let's see, Linda?
Yes.
Nice to have you here, thanks for coming in. And so we'll just go down the line and introduce you to each of the council members, and then we've got just a couple of questions for you. And thank you for your interest in the Senior Advisory Commission. So
Hi, I'm Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1, she/her.
Kimberly Wilburn, at large, she/her.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
And Brad Weersum, Mayor.
Kizzy Copley, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, at large, good to see you.
Paula Romailly, Ward 3.
So, that's it?
That's it.
And so that's the council. And our first question for you is, why are you interested in serving on the Senior Advisory Board, and what makes you the right person for this position?
Well, thanks for the question. Three weeks ago to the day, I ended a 24-year career as a Wazetta School Board member. And I live in the part of Minnetoka that is in the Wazetta School District. So I had been a board member for 24 years. During those 24 years, I also was on the Board of Regents at the University of Minnesota. I chaired the Board of Regents for a couple of years, and I was on the Board of Regents for 12 years. So I have a huge interest in education and how people thrive and what kind of lives they're living. And so when I saw this opening in the Minnetoka memo, I thought, hmm, that really interests me. I don't want something quite as heavy-duty as the Wazetta School Board or the Board of Regents. But I'm interested in how people can really thrive and function well as seniors. And so that's what my interest is. I think the second part of your question was, why do you, I think I'm the right person? And I suppose partly because of the experience and the knowledge I've gained in terms of education and lifelong learning and those kinds of things, but also, I think, because I really enjoy board work. I enjoy meeting new people, listening to ideas, trying to understand their ideas, also giving my ideas. And so I thought, this sounds like a board, as I say, that's not going to be just heavy, heavy-duty, but something that really interests me. And since I focused a lot on education and early, and kids and so on, I think maybe it's time to focus on the other end of the spectrum, maybe the seniors and so on.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. So, the next question we have, we only have two questions for our senior board candidates. What is one program, activity, or policy that you would want the board to consider?
Right, and I thought about the question, and I'm not going to come up with a direct answer, because I really feel that I would need to know more. I know, I think Minnetoka is great in getting the marsh, I think there's some programs there that probably would be interesting to build on. But I think, I mean, the things that interest me, and then I want to see if there are programs that go along with, are three elements that I feel are really crucial for seniors. And one is social ability, so that are there programs where people can get together with other people. Long-term learning, of course, I think is one of the things that is really crucial and very helpful to seniors. And then the other is physical activity, because I think that also is very important. So I would have to learn more about what programs are in each of those categories before I think I could come up with a program that needs to work.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. That's all we've got for you tonight. It's kind of probably one of the easier interviews that you've had, but
You're right.
But this is, your background is great, and we look forward to going through this, but thank you very much for your interest.
Okay, thanks, all of you, for all the work you do.
Thank you, Linda, have a great night.
Let's see, can I get this thing off?
Thanks for waiting around for us.
August, are you August by chance? No? No? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And you are August Aquila? Did I say that?
Aquila.
Aquila, okay. I'm glad I asked. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm Brad Weersum, and I will, we will just go down the line and introduce you to the council members. And we have a not-too-rigorous schedule tonight, we just had a couple of questions for you, and so, welcome. But first, we'll go to my left and introduce council members.
Hi, I'm Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1.
Okay, Patsy.
Hi, Kimberly Wilburn, at large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
I'm Brad Weersum, I'm the mayor.
Kizzy Copley, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, at large.
Paula Romailly, I represent Ward 3.
Very good. And then we've got a few other folks in the room, but we'll just, we'll just keep things moving, and we'll jump right into the questions.
Okay, great.
So the first question is, why are you interested in serving on the Senior Advisory Board, and what makes you the right person for this position?
Okay, well, I think it's important that people in the community become involved and give back, and I've always felt in my life that that was important. I've served on the Minnesota Opera Board for, in the 90s. I've lived in Minnetoka, I've lived in Minnesota for the last 30 years, in Minnetoka for the last 30 years. Prior to that, I was in Chicago, I lived in Chicago, and I was on the Chicago Opera Board. You can tell I like opera. And I was also president of my daughter's academy, parent president, not a paid position, obviously. So it's just that now that I have more time, I used to travel constantly, so I was never around, but now that I'm around, I have time, and I'd like to put my knowledge and my experience to help the community become better than it is. It's a great place to live, but we can always improve in what we do and how we do it. And I guess what makes me the right person for this position is that, A, I'm a senior citizen, and so that's one of the qualifications, I guess, for being on the Senior Advisory Board. But if I could give you a little story, and if I get long, just cut me off, my daughter had a skiing accident 20 years ago, and she was paralyzed from the chest down. And that made me and my wife very much aware of grab bars and how disabled people have to function within a house. So three years ago, I think it was three years ago, we built a house right behind the Williston Center where the old horse farm was. And it's a flat house, no steps, totally accessible, and it's going to be our forever house. But I think if we didn't have that experience in our life with our daughter, we wouldn't be aware of what seniors and other people really need. And so that's, I think that's one of the reasons. And then you see that every day now, 15,000 American citizens are turning 65 and older, and 65 is still pretty young, but, you know, add 15 years to that, and your life really changes quite a bit. So I would, I would really like to be able to make an impact, I'm passionate about this. I'd like to make an impact on how the city really moves forward in helping seniors, because in not-too-distant future, most of the people are going to be seniors. And I think we need to, you know, we need to address it. If you're 40 or 50, you don't think of old age, but when you're 70 or 80, it becomes more important. And if you look at all the problems with nursing facilities and things, the longer we can keep seniors independent, I think the longer we will have a more viable and healthy community.
Well, thank you very much for your answers, and I really agree with you. I mean, aging is not for the faint of heart.
No.
And so I think your perspective will be very helpful, so thank you so much. That's all we have for you, but
Paula.
Excuse me. Oh, the second question, oh, I got so wrapped up in the first question. Excuse me, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead. I apologize. I won't say senior moment or anything like that. We'll just, we'll just move on. But what is one program, activity, or policy that you would want the board to consider?
Okay, I've been thinking about this, and unfortunately, I have two.
That's all right. I mean, aging is not for the faint of heart.
No.
And, and so I, I think your perspective will be very helpful. So, thank you so much. That's all we have for you, but
Hello.
Excuse me. Oh, the second question. Oh, I got so wrapped up in the first question. Excuse me, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead. I apologize. I won't say "senior moment" or anything like that. We'll just, we'll just move on. But what is one program, activity, or policy that you would want the board to consider?
Okay. I've been thinking about this, and unfortunately, I have two.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay, good. I think that somewhere in the future, some type of real estate tax relief for seniors would be necessary, because most seniors are on a fixed income. Our property tax went up $1,300 last year, a big, a big amount, and we're lucky that, you know, where we're at and what we've done in life, we can handle it. But if you take that out 10 or 20 years, when you look at inflation, it's going to become really difficult for most seniors to stay where they're at. And, you know, it's a, it's a, like I said, it's a great community, but it's somehow we need to explore that, not immediately, but explore it for, what is our real estate bill going to look like in 10 years from now, in 2034? So that was one issue. The second issue, I think, that I had, if we can educate seniors and have some sort of educational program on how to make a really forever home, or really an adaptable home, because you see many times, people go out and they put handbars in the bathroom, but they're these nice chrome ones, and those aren't good. You need the ones with the sort of beads on them that are rough, so when you grab them. And if, you know, the, the physical activities at the marsh now and, and at the Williston Center, I go to about five or six classes a week, and there are like 40 people, you can't get into those things. So the, the physical thing, you know, the seniors, I think, are, are doing it, but it's, there's so many things that we don't know, that we could educate people as to what they could do themselves to make sure their home is more livable as they age.
Great.
So those were my two.
Thank you. Well, excellent ideas, and I appreciate your enthusiasm and thoughts. So, we're going to keep moving, because we only have two questions, but we've got a lot of people to meet. But thank you very much
Thank you.
for coming in tonight, and sorry, I almost skipped the second question. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Great, thank you so much.
And August, you'll be with me in a couple days. I'm Sersa, by the way.
Thank you.
Are you Elizabeth by chance? Elizabeth? No? Okay.
Have a good night.
Good night.
I don't need to answer, I'll ask all the questions.
It doesn't really matter to me at all.
You trust me? Am I doing okay? I'm not doing that well.
Give you your third chance to get it right.
If anybody thinks they can improve, I'm open to it.
I've seen you pushing it.
Yeah, we're actually a little ahead, so we might not have somebody here yet.
I couldn't find Elizabeth, but Marlene's ready.
Okay, well, then we'll talk to Marlene, and Elizabeth will get next. So you are Marlene Garvis?
I am.
Excellent, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Take your time, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
You're welcome. This is my first experience doing something like this here.
Okay.
I've had other experiences, but as you probably know from my resume, but not this. So, yeah, I'm happy to be here and answer your questions and
All right. Well, the way this is going to work is that we've got the seven of us along this table here, along the front, we are the, we are the city council. So we're going to start by introducing ourselves to you, and then we've got just a couple of questions. This isn't going to be a real long interview, but thank you for coming in. So with that, I'll go to my left and
Hi, I'm Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1.
Hi, Kimberly Welburn, at-large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
And I'm Brad Weersum, I'm the mayor.
Hi, Kizzy Copley, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, at-large, and a former employee at Mitchell-Hamlin School.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
I'm Paula Romailly, I represent Ward 3.
So, again, welcome, and
Can I put this on?
Yeah, just put that on, and you'll be good.
See if you can, oopsie, hear me. Okay.
All right, all good. So the first question we have for you is, why are you interested in serving on the Senior Advisory Board? And what makes you the right person for the position?
Well, it's an interesting question. So, I'm a senior, and I've lived in this area for 51 years, raised my children here, they all went to Hopkins High School. I, so I'm committed to the area, and I don't have any intentions of moving at this point in my life. So that's one thing that I think is really important. And my children were very active in the community when they were growing up. But my interests are really in terms of focusing on seniors. I am involved in the Hennepin County Bar Association, or I should say, the State Bar Association now has a senior lawyers and judges section, which again is looking at how to work with senior lawyers and judges in terms of transitioning and thinking about wellness and all the aspects of that. And I think one of the things I'm concerned about is that, the same thing for seniors in our community. I hear a lot of things about what seniors say about succession planning, you know, feeling alone and isolated, and those are things I'm really interested in participating and focusing on, and in making sure that our community offers those options, and maybe, you know, some education along those lines. By background, I'm a nurse, so I have some interest in, in health and keeping people healthy, and, and some of the aspects of doing that. So, those are some of the things I'm interested in, and hoping that I could contribute based on my education, training, and experience, not only as, as a nurse, but as a, as a lawyer and somebody who's been a participant in the community. And that's, that's really, that's, that's why I'm interested in doing this.
Excellent. Well, thank you. So, our second and last question, a really tough interview for you. What is one program, activity, or policy that you would want the board to consider?
You know, I have to say, I haven't really thought about policies. I mean, I have to really, to me, I would have to be on the board and give it some time to think about how the board operates. I do have your goals in terms of what the Senior Advisory Board is involved in advising the city on the needs and the status of seniors, determining and assessing existing resources, all of those things, evaluating proposed programs and recommending policies. So I, I think I, I lend some expertise to that. I've had a lot of leadership experience, both in, prior to becoming a lawyer and in my, my legal, in practicing law, and in my, and in my wider community interest. But one of the areas that I'm, that I've thought about a lot, I, I'm, I am a widow, I've taken care of myself and my house by myself, my children have been helpful, but they're all, live out of state. So I hear a lot of things about the seniors have said to me, what am I going to do? How am I going to manage when my spouse dies? And what am I, how am I going to get myself together? These are friends and acquaintances, and so I've always thought about, this is, this is so important for everybody to be independent and be able to take care of themselves to the extent that they can, or to have a caregiver do that. So I would be interested in that kind of education, and any policies directed to that in any way that I could be helpful.
Excellent.
That's one thing that I've thought about.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Well, our, our list of questions isn't too long tonight, but
I know, they are not.
I, I hope, I hope you consider it worthwhile coming in for so few questions, but we really, really appreciate your coming in and your answers, and we are going to be making decisions here in the next day or two, and we'll be getting back to you before the end of the week.
Oh, that'd be great.
And let you know. But thank you so much for your interest in the Senior Advisory Board.
Oh, you're very welcome. I think it's a really important, play a really important role in this community, so I'd be honored to be part of it.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take your time, we're in good shape timewise.
Have a good evening, it's getting warmer out.
Yes, thankfully, it's not so frigid like it has been.
Don't forget your, your scarf.
My scarf.
There we are.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, have a good night.
Thank you.
I know it.
No kidding. No kidding.
Can't we just keep them on?
I know. Seriously.
They are sharp.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Why do we have to pick?
Yeah, yeah. This is really good.
Word, good.
No Elizabeth? Okay. So, is she here?
Brenda?
Brenda? All right, well, then, let's do Brenda. We are nothing if not flexible.
Oh, really? Yeah, because the numbers are passing. Oh, I didn't know that.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Brenda? Brenda? All right.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, welcome. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Well, Lisa's not, it's frigid.
That's right, that's right. Well, you probably have a pretty good sense for how this is going to go, don't you?
Yeah.
So, that's all good. We're glad you're here, we've only got a couple of questions. We'll go through and introduce ourselves again, and then we'll get to it, so
You should put your microphone on.
Oops, yep, yeah, you gotta stick
Oh, you want me to put this on?
Yeah. So we
So you can hear me.
Right.
So I'm Patsy Foster-Bolton, and I represent Ward 1.
Kimberly Welburn, at-large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
And I'm Brad Weersum, the mayor.
Kizzy Copley, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, at-large.
Paula Romailly, I am Ward 3.
And what does "at-large" mean?
The whole city, not just one ward, all four.
Oh, okay.
So we have, we have four wards, and then we have three at-large council members, two council members and the mayor, so
Okay.
So, the ward council members represent a quarter of the city. We're
It doesn't mean we escaped, just, you know.
She's at-large.
Yeah. Okay.
So, that's, that's how it works, and then the at-larges have to run across the whole city.
Oh, they have to run across the whole city, okay.
Yes. So, our first question for you is, why are you interested in serving on the Senior Advisory Board? And what makes you the right person for a position on the Senior Advisory Board?
Okay. Well, the primary reason that I was interested in the Senior Advisory Board, I'd seen it a couple of years ago when you had openings, they must kind of rotate on a two-year basis or similar. And I'm really interested in working with people of my own age to solve problems that we are familiar with, that, you know, we have firsthand knowledge and experience with. And I'm just interested in working in the community. I am retired, but I do part-time coaching and training for an organization called Neighborhood Development Center in St. Paul. And I'm just interested in working with other people that have, are close to the situations that, where the need is, and will have more motivation to work on those issues because we're, we're so involved in them. My background is in business administration. I'm not going to tell you how many years ago that was, but I'm in business administration, have a background in project management, which I feel would be helpful, working on committees and working with the organization, marketing and advertising, and promotion. So I thought that would be, probably be applicable in some way to helping to get things going or working on projects with other people in the organization.
Excellent. Well, thank you for sharing that. So then, what is one program, activity, or policy that you would want the board to consider?
Okay. The primary thing I would like the board to consider is transportation for seniors and other people in the community who do not have access to a vehicle, have a difficult time trying to take public transportation. I work in a senior, I live in a senior community, and I know how I'm going to feel when it's time for me to give up my car. I'm not going to be happy about how limiting that makes you. If you don't have, you don't have a caregiver, you don't have someone who's, you can just pick up the phone and call when you need them, it makes people very isolated. I can see it from just a change, I've been at Boulevard Gardens for the last 10 years, and I can just see the kind of changes that it has made in people's lives as they've had to give up driving, either because it's, it's now too expensive and they can't afford to maintain and insure and keep a car any longer, or they've gotten to the age where they can't drive anymore. So it, it isolates people. We have so many great programs, I mean, I, I've attended many of the programs and workshops and things that the city of Minnetoka offers, but if you can't get there, and then it, it really limits you. I'm familiar with the program that Maple Grove has, they have a ride door-to-door program. My daughter's 43, but when she was in high school, her first job, she was able to call the transportation service, they would stop and pick her up and drop her off at a central place in Maple Grove, and she could walk to her job, and then she could also take the bus back home. So she didn't have to take, because there's no easy way to get to Maple Grove from Plymouth or Minnetonka, I mean, you had, literally have to go downtown almost to be able to transfer, which doesn't make sense. So I would like to see us have more of an option where you could schedule a ride, I mean, I, I consider it would be paid for, but can schedule a ride, have, have a central pickup point, have a central drop-off point, so that people can take advantage of the resources that, you know, the, the Y and the, you know, marsh is now open, and other things that are going on in the city, things that we have here at the community center, for people as they age who can't take advantage of those programs because they simply don't have a way to get to them.
Great. Well, thank you for that.
Very interesting.
Appreciate it. Well, that's all we have for you tonight, but we really, really appreciate your ideas and your thoughts, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate that.
And don't forget to take your
Don't forget to take this off.
So, we make you put it on, but then we also make you take it off, too.
I would.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Want to keep them on?
As you can see, I have a cane, it would be difficult if I didn't have a car, so So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for being here. No?
That's Vanessa, right?
Yep. Well, we'll see.
Brenda, did you got Brenda Rhodes?
That was Brenda.
That was Brenda. We just did Brenda, so no, it's
Okay.
So we're waiting on Marlene, right? No, not Marlene, Elizabeth, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth didn't come.
So she was, but she might not be making it. And then we have a break.
Okay. Look at you. She knew how to get in, she can go to the front door, like
I didn't miss any calls.
Don't they? Oh, goodness. This is good.
This is.
Goodness. See, this boy, they don't be playing.
Well, you know, you trimmed the questions down and made it, we'll slow down a little bit when we get to the four-question things, but we'll be, we'll be fine, we're going to, we're going to keep it moving.
Got some really good answers, though.
So, if we have a little time, Mike, is this, I mean, should we, should we jump to some of the other topics we have on the agenda, or do we want to take a break and then come back and, and see how we are timewise? Council, do you like a break?
Keep us moving.
Okay, we're going to keep, keep, should we talk, talk over a few things here, because we have on our agenda the annual council and staff appointments?
Should we jump to the appointments?
Yeah, why don't we do that and take a look? So you can introduce it, Mike, and then I'll take it as you would like.
Yeah, so thank you, council. So, there's a discussion question, that is really just related to what, which ones do you want to say, well, that's really the purpose of tonight, is to Well, that's really the purpose of tonight, is to also identify which boards and commissions you're interested in serving on. So we'll pull this up, it's in your packet, but we also have it up on the screen for you. Maybe we could take this one section at a time, if that's okay with you, mayor.
Yep.
So, this was again, in the council packet, for our newest members, Paula and Patsy, just a little more background. So every year, this time of year, we use a council, decide as a group which, we call them, boards and commissions, other advisory boards that are available for representation. So there are council opportunities as well as staff. And so, I know this is titled 2024, so this is not yet baked, so this is, we have to fill this in tonight. On the right-hand side is the column for staff. Staff has vetted this internally, and so every, all the staff representatives that you see on the right-hand side, those are for 2024. For the middle column, for council, that is current 2023. And so really for tonight, the exercise is to determine where you all wanna, wanna land, so this is really your discussion. What we did note in here for you, counsel, up on the screen, items in red. Items in red are the ones that have changed, that changed in 2023. So, starting with the city association section, I don't know how you wanna handle this, mayor, there are currently three openings from 2023.
But, but there's a mistake.
Getting to it?
There is a mistake, so I have been on the election task force, that, for, since, since I was on the Improving Services Delivery Committee, so... So it's actually not a big...
Okay, yeah, okay, we can...
Okay, so, thank you, Deb, and so what, at least what we have right for tonight, just starting with the, the positions that are, have been open. One is on the League of Minnesota Cities Human Resource and Data Practices Committee. No one served in that role in 2023, that's why none is listed there. And I should remind all of you that these are not mandatory, these are all volunteer, so there is no requirement that the city participate in any of those listed in this section. But they are, again, your opportunities to get further involved. So we do have the League of Minnesota Cities HR and Data Practices Committee that I mentioned. As Deb just pointed out, the LMC Elections Task Force, Deb has served on that, so if we didn't have you listed on there, I think that was a mistake on staff's part.
We just added it this year.
I get super confusing because I have my day job committee assignments, and then I have my side gig committee assignments.
And Deb communicated with that, with me today, and that's what I mentioned to her, is like, we, sometimes we are, we, we're not sure which hat she has on.
Right.
So with the Elections Task Force, that is a new list on there. That's a, I think that, isn't that generally one meeting a year, I think, Deb? So Deb, if you're, if you're wanting to remain on there, we'll, we'll put your name in. And then the other current opening is...
Green one.
Metro Cities Municipal Revenues Committee. Currently, there is, there is none on that one. And then, so I thought, I might speak with the mayor today, just on how he might present this. And so those are the current three openings, and so there's, Brad, I'll turn it over to you if you have any council members.
Yeah, I'll just, well, just for background for council and for our new council members. So essentially, there's three organizations that have these committees that we can participate in. LMC is the League of Minnesota Cities, and they have, these are policy committees. And you can sign up, if you're interested in one or even more of the committees, you can sign up for those. They, they typically meet three times over the summer. And then they have a policy adoption committee, or meeting, which is a large meeting in the fall. So essentially, it's four meetings a year, they, one a month, I think they're in May, June, and July, or, but it, it could be June. I mean, anyway, one, one a month in the late summer. And, and so you can sign up if you have any interest in these. As Mike said, there's no, there's no requirement that you participate in these, but they are, they are interesting. It's a great way to get to know people from around the state, because there are city officials from all over the state. And, and the league is just an outstanding organization, so building connections there will be very informative and very helpful.
And they have been hybrid meetings, so you don't have to...
Yes, you can, you don't have to travel.
Question.
Yes.
Can there be more than one person? I noticed that...
Yes, there can be, yeah.
You can add, jump onto a committee even if it's not vacant.
Right, right.
And we don't have to take the vacant one first if we're not necessary to do it.
Right.
Yeah, do what, do what you trust.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, like, if you're the second, if you're the second person, if there's like a voting thing, then you, the city usually just gets one vote.
You get one vote as a city, yeah. So then, then Metro Cities is a similar organization, but it's for cities in the metropolitan area. And Metro Cities is all, and the league is also a lobbying organization, it lobbies the state, and also does some lobbying at the national level. Metro Cities lobbies at the state and also the Met Council. And they're kind of a unique organization because of the relationship they have with the Met Council. And they similarly have these different policy committees, and they meet three times in the summer. Often on the, they don't conflict with the league's meetings, but they often pair them up, so like, one will be in the morning, and the, Metro Cities will have one in the afternoon, so they, they work collaboratively. And then the NLC is the National League of Cities. And Deb is our only person who was on a policy committee for NLC. But there are other policy committees at the NLC that are not listed, listed here. And, and if you were interested, you know, there's an NLC meeting coming up, that's a good opportunity to learn about NLC policy committees, and there may be policy committees, or a policy committee with NLC that you're interested in joining as well. But right now, our only representative at the NLC level is Deb, who is on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, Steering Committee. The other thing is that, like, for the NLC, I mean, there is a process sometimes to be appointed to these committees. I think if you're interested in serving on LMC or Metro Cities, it's, it's not too much of a process. But, but I think on NLC, I think you have to write a letter and probably get a couple of letters of support and so forth. Deb can probably tell you better than I can, but, but it's not like, oh, I wanna be on that, and you're automatically on it with the NLC. It's one where there is a bit of a process to be included. So, that's a lot of introduction, but I think it's important, and, you know, I would say, ideally, you know, we can have multiple people on a committee, but if we have vacancies, it'd be nice to fill those vacancies before we, you know, we get a second person on a committee. But again, my view is if you're interested in something, go for it, and, and we'll figure it out. So, if you'd like to, if anybody'd like to sign up, let staff know. You don't have to decide right this minute, but it'd be great to get this nailed down this week, because I think it's the intent of staff to take this forward, actually, not just this week, by noon on Thursday. Ideally, how about end of day on Wednesday? Because staff would like to put that in the staff report, and, and make it so that we can take action on these things in our upcoming Monday council meeting. Rebecca?
I'm gonna step away then from the Metro Cities Housing, and give Kimberly an opportunity to serve on that one as the voting member. And then, I, I'm kind of interested in the HR and Data Practices Committee, but I don't, I, I recognize that there's, you know, I don't wanna step on any toes, but I, that's the one I would do. I'm gonna limit it, because I have my hands fall down farther down the list.
Great. Any, any other interests, I mean, Kim, Kizzy, excuse me.
I talked to Mike earlier today. I wanna stay on the ones that I'm on, but then I was interested in the metro housing. So if Rebecca's gonna step away, then I wouldn't mind.
Okay.
And which one?
The metro housing.
Housing Economic Development for Metro Cities?
So taking Rebecca, and so Rebecca's coming off, and you're wanting to go on?
So Kimberly become the, the voting member, and, and Kizzy would become the, the second member? Does that work for you? And, you know, I serve on the, well, first of all, I don't wanna cut anybody off, I'm on plenty of things. Is there any, anyone else? I, I was gonna comment on the Metro Cities Municipal Revenues Committee. I'm already on the, they're related, I'm on the Fiscal Futures Committee for the league. If nobody takes that, I'll take it, but if someone else would like to take it, they're welcome to it.
I just don't think I can do much more. And I would say, the Metropolitan Agencies Committee is really just the Met Council Committee. I'm actually, I've been trying to work on getting the name changed, because it, I think, once upon a time, there was more than one agency, and now there's just Met Council.
Yeah.
And the work that we do is relatively, it's relatively limited, but it's a good way of learning about the interrelationship between metropolitan, you know, cities in the metro area and the Met Council. If somebody really wanted to take that... Uh huh? I'm sorry, what? Metro Agencies, it's the Metro Cities Metro Agencies Committee. It's really the Met Council Committee, is what it really is. So, I learned a lot there, and we've done some interesting work, but if somebody was really dying for it, let me know.
And I'll, I'll add a little color to that, too, because the Metro Cities is unique in that it lobbies the Met Council. And the Met Council, I've been pretty involved in this topic, because there's a lot of talk about Met Council governance. And Representative Frank Hornstein and Senator Scott Dibble, in part due to the challenges associated with Southwest Light Rail, have made a pretty significant effort to change the governance of the Met Council, and make it more, involving more elected officials as opposed, as opposed to making, having it be an appointed body by the governor. And I think that there's, in my personal view, is there's unintended consequences with that. But it could be an interesting time to be on that committee, so I just throw that out as FYI.
And I mean, I'm on it, but...
I'd like to, I'm sorry, I just, that would be helpful to learn more, have a chance to learn more about these committees before, you know, kind of making decisions and jumping in, so maybe if you have until end of day Wednesday, or...
And there are ways to get some information, and, you know, you could probably even reach out to the organizations and ask some questions, too.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
You know, as Deb, maybe for Patsy and Paula, they're, we can, I can send you some links. Mayor said, the mayor mentioned calling them, their website has a lot of robust information. Both the league website and the Metro Cities website, it gives you more details on when they meet. I just looked up for the League of Minnesota Cities, their committees, there's the four of them. They meet, for example, Improving Service Delivery, they meet on Monday mornings in July, one meeting July, August, and September.
And they're typically two- to three-hour meetings?
Yeah.
They're three-hour, yeah, two and a half to three-hour meetings. Improving Local Economies, they meet on Tuesday mornings in July, August, September. HR and Data Practices Committee meets on Tuesday afternoons in July, August, September. And then Improving Fiscal Futures is July, August, September, again on Wednesday morning. So it's not only your interest, but then how it might fit into your schedules, because they, they tend to be three-hour type meetings.
Right.
And they are, as I think you pretty much, they do offer a virtual element now. Years ago, before COVID, you have to drive to St. Paul for every meeting.
And when you were from Ely, that was a big drive.
Yeah. I will say, you know, it's hard to pick, and you're like, I'm doing so much already just to get the hang of this in, in January. I just did one thing my first, I mean, there's no pressure...
Right.
To commit to, you know, Deb likes to do a lot of these things, so she's gonna come up, her name's gonna come up a lot, but don't feel like we're pressuring anybody.
I think that's really a good point. I mean, you know, there's plenty, I mean, you will find that, as a council member, there's plenty of ways to get sucked into doing more stuff, and, and it's, it's, it's interesting. It's interesting, it's fun, it's good, but you can easily overcommit yourself, and that's, that's a mistake. We want you to have a good experience, and don't feel, as Rebecca said, don't feel pressured.
And there, you know, down at the, at the bottom of the spreadsheet, there are things like, I've been on the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission, and, you know, nobody, nobody talks about that all that much. You know? But you learn, you actually, you learn a lot about sort of how cable works, and, so, you know, don't just limit yourself up there, because they don't, you know, those things don't, don't meet, you know, they don't necessarily meet as often. What does Southwest Suburban Cable Commission meets, maybe three times a year, maybe?
All right, I'll tell you what, so that's, that's the top part of the spreadsheet. We've got our, we've got our next candidate here, we're gonna jump around, but let's be respectful of her time, and welcome you. So this is Lizbeth, correct?
No.
Vanessa, excuse me, I knew I could do this wrong.
Still no Elizabeth.
Vanessa, okay, still no, okay, we got Vanessa, I apologize. So Vanessa, welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
So, have a seat, put, put your microphone on, and we'll, we'll run you through the, through the process. It shouldn't be too rigorous, but we're interested in hearing what you have to say.
You can also just hold it if you want to.
Whatever works for you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask you, because I wear hearing aids in both ears, and even with the hearing aids, I struggle. You might say town, and it sound like brown around to me. So if you speak to me slower and a little louder, so that I can understand what's going on. Thank you so much.
So, we're gonna start at my left and introduce each of us on the council, and then we will ask you a couple of questions, and we won't keep you up too much past your bedtime.
Patsy Foster-Bolton.
Thank you.
Ward one.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Wilburn, at large.
Hey, Kim.
Rebecca Shack, ward two.
Hey, Becky.
Brad Weersum, mayor.
Hey, mayor.
Kizzy Copley, ward four.
How you doing?
Deb Calvert, at large, fellow hearing aid wearer.
All right. With sister ears.
There you go.
All right.
Paula Rameley, and I represent ward three.
Nice to meet you.
All right, Vanessa, again, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
It's our pleasure. So, just two questions for you. So, the first question is, why are you interested in serving on the senior advisory board? And what makes you the right person for that position?
Okay. I've served on boards before, and I just recently moved to the area in April. And so I, from being involved in the community in North Minneapolis, it made me deliver, go and look at your, your website, and sign up for all the newsletters, because I wanna be in the know, I wanna know what's going on. And I seen that you were taking applications for different committees and boards. And so I said, well, I'm not, I'm retired now, I just moved here, and let me find something to do, rather than sitting in the house. I'm, I'm 66, mother of two, grandmother 14, great-grandmother of six. My experience in this is, I, in 2010, 2011, I served for the City of Illinois Baptist Convention as their Northern Area Youth Director. And then when I moved here, I moved here in 87, I moved away in 98, I moved back in 2011, when my son started his church, and I lived in North Minneapolis at Heritage Park. I served in Heritage Park on the, on the board as president, vice president, and as a board member from 2012 to 2017. After that, in 2016, I served, I'm a founding member of the Environmental Justice Coronated Council through the Public Policy Project, where I served under James Trice. From that, I ended up being on the Northern Green Zone Task Force for the city of Minneapolis. And I also served this co, and I also was chair of that, we, it was like three of us that we co-chired that. And then I also served on the Upper Harvard Terminal CPAP Committee for the city, where I co-chired that as well. And I, I've had 30 hours of conflict resolution training, so I'm a medium person. So I could think, and I could work, I'm a team member, I could agree to disagree. I believe in one race, the human race. I think we have different cultures, we have different ethics, but we should learn each other and love each other. I love everybody for who they are, how they are, and where they are. I believe in the creative mandate, and that is producing positive families... families, doing productive work, and looking for opportunities to bless others. So, I thought it would be a great place for me to be on the board, for the Senior Advisory Board.
Excellent.
That's it.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's, that's very impressive.
Thank you.
So, our second, last question is, what is one program, activity, or policy that you would want the board to consider?
Okay. I looked at your website, I looked at your objectives, what the Senior Advisory Board does. I love the Marsh. I even read a couple of your business, because I was looking to see what, what things that you are, projects that you are working on interested in. So, I love the idea of working with the Marsh. I love the Sunshine Club. I thought that's a great community to be on and to work on. And then, my concern or passion now, that I'm older, and I'm disabled, and I have disabilities, is making sure things are ADA compliance. Food, I, I struggle with the food that we get. We need healthier food. Wouldn't I go in the grocery store to buy food now? If I buy a banana today, tomorrow's too ripe and almost rotten. So, the food, the quality of food that we get. Another thing, like the lady said prior to me, transportation is a great one that I think we could work on. And also, staying active and social and being, some of us are isolated. Although we have family, grandkids and stuff, they don't, they're not there, because they have their own families and lives to deal with. So, working in those areas, and also environmental justice. When I was a young girl, I used to talk to my mommas about the things of the world that was going on, and she used to say, Vanessa, you're taking on the weight of the world. And so, when I went to my first environmental justice meeting, my eyes were open to the global warming, warming, all of the things that we are dealing with now. So, and I just got a passion for it. I just wanna make the world, I wanna leave this world a better place. I have grandkids and great-grandkids, and I wanted to be a great place for them to grow up in, to learn in, and to be involved in.
Well, Vanessa, thank you. That's, that's inspirational. We're done with our questions, though. I had a personal question, was that, you know, I've got four kids and no grandkids. I'd like some advice on how to get them. But we're not, we're not gonna solve that tonight.
I know we won't. But I tell you how you do it, you love, you love them, you love, you love on them, and then you also end up with extended family. So, I got a lot of goddaughters, I got a lot of kids that I've met, because I'm a licensed up teacher, I'm a, I've been a correctional officer for nine years, and I, I'm also a licensed cosmetologist. So, I'm a people person.
I can see that.
And I've also been a resident manager for Human eternally Job Corps. So, I, I love kids, I wanna prick their minds and get them to thinking about their future, what they wanna do, what they need to do, what they need to start doing to prepare to be those things. And you're not looking for a job, you're looking for a career. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, yes.
Just put a right track.
Well, you're inspirational, but.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna call it a night for you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
You will be, you will hear from us, the city, this week.
Okay.
But thanks for your interest.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Me, too.
Me, too.
Okay, one more check. Have a good night. Thanks for being here. Maybe someday I'll have grandchildren. Maybe.
Maybe.
Okay? All right, well, then, let's see. So, we're gonna be, we're a little ahead, schedule-wise, which is always nice. Let's, let's go back and finish the sheet on our regional organizations. Is that worth a few, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Brad. So, just a quick question on that top section. So, Deb, do you say you were staying on or off Metro Agencies?
I'll stay on it unless somebody wants, somebody else wants it.
Okay.
So, I just wanna give, you know, if somebody's interested in it, then.
This comes up yearly, too, is that right?
Every year.
Yeah. And it's not like, oh, if you miss it now, you've missed it. I mean.
Yeah.
Things, it could be dynamic, and it could be, okay, wanna get this done, and somebody changes their mind, or something comes up, say, oh, well, this, somebody moved off this, and the opening could happen, that could happen next month, or whatever. So, it, it's not like it's, it's inflexible.
The only thing that's a little bit inflexible on this top half is that for National League of Cities.
Yeah.
They have, the, the application process is over for the year. But, you know, if you go to the, if you go to the national meeting, you might wanna sit in on some of the committee meetings to see if it's really something that you'd be interested in, and then pick the one that, that would interest you if you wanted to serve on that committee.
And I think I did, last thing I was saying, this top section, Brad, then can you ready to move on and go to that next section? Again, just going back to both the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities. Again, we said there's three meetings. Kind of, I would say, the fun part of it is, and I know it's been briefly mentioned, is these committees, the composition of these committees are mayors, council members, and city staff all throughout the state. So, you'll, you'll be sitting with anywhere, how, these committees, anywhere from twenty to thirty-five people. They need, like I mentioned, you get, they get no other colleagues from across the state. So, Metro Cities, there's rural cities, and you really develop what's important policy decisions for the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities to advocate at the legislature each year.
And you learn a lot about the challenges and solutions, you know, so kind of the challenges and opportunities in, in cities and towns all over the state. You learn a lot, because every town has different challenges and different solutions, and you just learn a lot about sort of what, what people are facing and how they deal with it, so.
Yeah, it is, it is very interesting to, to learn about other cities. But, but again, don't, don't bite off more than you can chew, but, but over time, I think you'll find getting involved with these different organizations to be very rewarding.
Okay, we can scroll to the next section.
So, the next section are regional organizations, and we have a few vacancies. And Mike, I don't know if you have anything you wanna say?
Okay, so we tried to highlight the, the red ones where there could be potential changes that we're aware of, certainly with the Green Line Extension Business Advisory Council. We do have a resident, Dan Duffy, that's on that board. There was not an appointment in two thousand twenty-three, so there's an opportunity there. I did send Patsy and Paula, I think sent him an email with, with some links to all these organizations. So, with that Green Line Business Advisory Commission, they are through the Met Council, they meet in their advisory group, just about the Green Line Extension. I can read a little bit more about that in the correspondence I sent you. And the Places Committee, Brian Kirk and Kimberly Wilburne were on this last year. Certainly with now Mr. Kirk gone, I don't, Kimberly can speak to whether he'd be more than one person, I think Kimberly's been representing the city in these meetings. Julie Wishnack and Alicia Gray also attend those as well. The Places Committee is about more of the artwork.
Yes.
Public art.
Yeah, public art.
Public art.
Public art.
Oh, I see.
With the, with the light rail.
But, yeah, definitely, you can have more than one person on there, and it's not, it, it won't impinge on anything. And, yeah, actually, I'm gonna miss Brian on there, because he, he was like, what, co-chair of the committee or whatever, and so he knew all the stuff, and I don't know it, but.
So eventually, this group is trying to make decisions about, once the rail line is open, public, potential public art along, along the corridor.
Right, and working on how it's gonna be paid for, and joint powers agreements, and, and what each, each city is, it's kind of doing its own thing, and anyway, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Kimberly. Another, maybe a couple other highlights, mayor and council. I four ninety-four commission, so you do have Rebecca and Brad on that. They're, they're, those are pretty staple, pretty much staples, I think, on, on those groups. Rebecca is the chair of the I four ninety-four commission, and has served on that for many years, been chair for many years. So, those, again, I don't think there's, unless they indicate, I don't think moving on those.
I mean, I think I'm committed for this year, but if somebody has a strong interest for the future, let me know, and we can transition. But I, I am the chair this year, so I would be leaving them in a bad spot if.
And the I four ninety-four commission, really quick, is, maybe it's a quick synopsis.
Oh, it's really interesting. It, it really handles two things, commuter services, which is helping people, helping reduce congestion on four ninety-four and throughout the metro. So, things like van pools, car pooling, bike to work, manage a lot of that, work with residential multifamily housing, and businesses and schools along kind of the whole corridor. And then, also, we work very closely with MnDOT on transportation management and projects, and kind of managing and lobbying, and doing all kinds of things to deal with making four ninety-four a more, less congested place to travel. The last thing, there are eighty-four counties in Minnesota, and, and the data says that people from eighty-two counties travel on four ninety-four every day.
Every day.
That group is very active.
Yeah.
A big piece of that. The other couple, just mentioning, the watershed districts are somewhat unique. The Lake Minnetoka Conservation District, we do have a resident, Nicole Stone, who serves on that, that's supported by the mayor and council. With the other two watershed districts noted, Nuihaa Creek and then Nine Mile Creek, those are actually hand-up and county appointments. We do not have any council appointed to that. We don't need to have council appointed to them, but if you are interested, you just have to let us know. Those tend to be more monthly meetings with the watershed districts. They, they do have that, the watershed district's presence in our community. So, again, there's, there are, there's meetings, tend to be once a month, and you get involved with watershed issues, watershed district issues. Regional council leaders, that is the mayor. And then, with Deb being appointed as the alternate mayor, so her name is listed up there as the vet and Brad, you know, attend those meetings. Same thing with the Waihli-Purig Creek Watershed District, I'm appointed, Deb mentioned a few minutes ago, the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission. So, Deb is the council representative. Has there been an alternate over the years?
Not since Bob Ellingson.
Not since Bob Ellingson. And our, and our own Patty Latham has been chairing it.
So Patty Latham, right, she's the manager, chairs that committee. We both, the Southwest Cable Commission, real quick, is, how many cities have we got? Eden Prairie, Minnetoka.
Eden Prairie, Minnetoka, Richfield, it's an odd, and Bloomington, yeah. It's a, it's an odd little bunch of cities.
And generally, council people, city managers, city staff.
Hopkins.
Doing top, well, cable, cable TV. Let's see, what else is listed up there? Active, really, anything in the counties? Councilor Sheppe was the representative last year. I can't tell you much about that, Kelly, staff has not, or Kelly, Kelly, they serve as staff, but I can't give much detail on what that's like.
I don't, I don't have a good sense either.
So, that's the middle section. So, those are the regional organizations. There is a couple opportunities up there. Brad, you wanna?
You know, I.
With the council on any of that?
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, I don't really, I, I serve on the Green Line Extension Management Committee and the Executive Change Control Board. I, I have, we have meetings probably every six to eight weeks for the Green Line Extension Management Committee, and we get updates on the progress on the, you know, Southwest Light Rail. I have not, while I'm on that Executive Change Control Board, I don't think there's much for us to do, because I, I have not participated in any meetings in that in the last year or two. So, I think that's, that's kind of a placeholder, but I don't think there's a lot going on there. But, you know, this extent, this Construction Information Work Group, well, excuse me, the, the Green Line Extension Business Advisory Committee, Dan Duffy is a, has been a long time participant in that. He's a resident. It would be nice, perhaps, I don't think they meet real often, but, you know, it really is, you know, the business support for Southwest Light Rail. And having, Dan represents us well, but, you know, having, having a council member being a support role, I don't think would be a particularly difficult role to play. But, you know, Southwest Light Rail is gonna be a big deal for our community, and it's a great way to learn, to get, you know, to get involved. So, if that's something somebody's interested in, that would be great. And then, I think we should, you know, I know Councilmember Sheppe was, you know, very, you know, very active and involved in a lot of sports-related things, and I have a feeling, you know, I think Kelly would be a good resource on finding, if that's something, but, you know, a connection on, you know, healthy living, and active living, I think Kelly could provide information on that, so. That's all I've got.
I would say, I would be, I would be willing to step into either one of those Green Line or the active living roles if there's not other interest, because I do, I agree, I think those are things that are important to have. But I would defer to anybody else if they wanted to do.
Well, I would be willing to, I mean, I think I'm thinking about asking Kelly, at least.
Yeah, do that.
I don't wanna commit anything, but I will definitely reach out to him.
So, just slot me and Mike if nobody else wants to do it, but I don't need to.
And I had.
More about the business, the Green Line business.
Yeah. And I had, I had coffee with Dan Duffy the other day, and, you know, he'd be a, he'd be a great person to talk to, too. But I, I think that's a nice way to get connected to the Southwest Light Rail project, which is, as we all know, is behind schedule, but it's going to happen.
I wanna be mindful of candidates' time. It is time for our next interview.
Okay, well, let's, let's jump to, so are we pretty, all right, let's see, is there anything else we have to do on this?
There's one more section we could have to go through as well.
Should we do it quick, or should we, should we jump to the?
Let's do it quick.
Okay. Flip to the next one, we'll be quick. So, we really only, Partners for Healthy Kids, that's, Councilman Sheppe had that one. So, we'll have an opening there. And I don't think we really have any other openings. The Bennett, Bennett Family Park, we have not typically staffed that, and there's, there's history there. Glenlight Golf Course Operating Committee, I think Kelly handles that pretty well. I don't think there's a need. So, really, the only one is Partners for Healthy Kids, and I think we should, I should be more knowledgeable about that, too, but I'm not. So, looks like everything else is pretty filled. Is there anyone who, you know, I've been doing Taka cares, and if someone wants to pick that up, that's welcome. But that's really working with Minnetoka School District on drug and alcohol awareness and policies and things like that. But I'm happy to continue doing that. But if that's in somebody's sweet spot, they're welcome to, they're welcome to take it if they'd like it. But I don't think there's any, other, other than the Partners for Healthy Kids, there's no slots that really need to be filled. And I don't think we have anyone here who can comment on what that really is.
I have no idea.
Okay, well, then, you know, let's, let's just have a follow-up on that one, that we'll ask Alicia in terms of what that really is. I think, I think Councilman Sheppe had a particular interest in that topic, and that's why he volunteered for it. And, and, you know, I think it's difficult to ask somebody to volunteer here if we don't really know what it is. So, let's get that report and come back, and if, maybe, maybe, Seressa, you could, you know, just share a little information from Alicia on what that is, and then see if anybody wants to sign up. Mike, do you have any other suggestions?
So, I think we've got, this is good, so I think we've heard a couple of changes here tonight. And then, I think as Brad has mentioned, if you have anything after tonight you wanna do some research and think about where you wanna put your time, just let us know, let me know, and then we'll, we wanna bring this forward to next Monday's council meeting, get approved. Some meetings certainly aren't happening till later this year, but a lot of these, some of these organizations, we need to notify them, who is the council appointee.
Right.
So that way, because they send out agendas and information, so we wanna get this done as soon as we can.
Very good. Any other questions? Anyone? All right, I think we'll move on, then. Seressa, do you have what you need, kind of?
Yes.
We have a couple, we, we need a little feedback, we need some feedback, and we have a couple of gaps that we have to.
So, so if, if I'm just staying on stuff?
I don't need to hear from you. Yep.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
They certainly just reach out to me, just email me copies, Sarissa, and if you have any changes outside of what we talked about here. If we don't hear from you, then we see what's good.
Yep.
Put it in the packet, and then even next Monday, if there are some last minute changes, we still can do those on Monday.
And, and I will offer, I mean, I have some awareness on some of these, not all, but if anybody wants to reach out to me and-
Same.
Have a question, I'll do my best to get an answer for you if I don't have it right away.
Me, too.
All right. Okay. Well, then we'll move on with our interviews, and we're done with the Senior Advisory Board. We're done with DEI. And so we are moving to the Planning Commission, and we have, I believe, four candidates. We have four questions for the Planning Commission candidates. We'll try and keep things moving.
Okay.
So far, so good, right?
Only one opening, yes.
Right, right in front of the monitor? Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hello, David. Welcome.
We're recording it.
Yes.
Can we do that now? Hang on, okay.
It's a public meeting.
Okay.
You're all scratchy. There we go. Okay. Am I mic'd up? You good?
You're good.
Okay. All right, welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
So, we're going to go down the line, introduce ourselves, and then we've got a series of four questions. I don't think they're stump the band questions, but we'll ask you the questions, and we'll try and keep things moving, so welcome, David.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll turn to-
Hi, David. Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward One.
Hello.
Kimberly Wilburn, at large.
Kimberly.
Rebecca Shack, Ward Two.
Brad Wirson, Mayor.
Kizzy Coakley, Ward Four.
Deb Calvert, at large.
Oliver Meili, Ward Three.
All right, four questions. Here we go. Please tell us about yourself and what in your background makes you the right person for this position?
Sure. Okay, well, I mean, first, just to thank you to all you guys for taking me this far. It's a, it's an honor to be considered for a role like this. I think it's a really important one. I guess, just obviously, I ran in the most recent campaign cycle. That was a great education for me, and I followed city issues for a long time now, watched a lot of council meetings from the comfort of my office, most often the next morning or the next day, but followed issues for a long time. So I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of both public sentiment around issues, kind of the community values in general, but also just how things work. Key players, groups that are engaged, that promote their individual issues, yeah, like how everything kind of gets done and has been done here for a long time. I think also I have, call it, kind of respect for the past and hope for the future, I guess. I'm well aware of all the work that has been done in the decades leading up to today by a great many people, a lot of them volunteers, a lot of them council members, that have made Minnetoka what it is. And that is a very desirable place to live, where a lot of people are really, really happy and excited to call their home. I want to continue that, partly because, again, tonight another example, I have a seven-year-old out there watching, I think, Garfield on her iPad. There's no accounting for taste, is there? Watching something, and, but, she's a reminder every day that there are lots of kids out there, and lots of people in different walks of life who want to live in the city and create the future together. And I feel like that reminder for me every day is, what can I do to help ensure that this is a city that my kids, or the kids that are like them, or other people in the community, will have the same quality of life that I do in 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, and 100 years and beyond? Because let's face it, I mean, that's the beauty of the Planning Commission, not one decision they make is less than a 100-year decision. These are big decisions they're making. And lastly, it's an opportunity to support you guys. I know what's involved in this job, I know it's hard. I, I mean, I was, to be honest, a reluctant city council candidate because I know that this is a big commitment. And one of the things that makes it more manageable for all of you is having a really good planning commission to help groove the track for you guys, so you can have more confidence in your decisions on major issues. And for me, planning issues are the issues when it comes to city government.
Great. Well, we'll keep moving, because we don't have-
Oh, no.
-a lot of time here. The Planning Commission is faced with a lot of difficult decisions and differing opinions. What is your approach when required to make decisions in this type of environment?
Okay, like I said, it kind of boils down to three things. Kind of finding common ground, leading with empathy, that's kind of one of them. The second is, again, just knowledge of the community and the issues. And the third is trust and respect for the staff. So the first piece, like I said, I have a way of doing things where I want people to feel engaged and heard in the process. And when we have a process, when I've watched planning commission meetings or council meetings, when there are hard decisions to be made, and people feel listened to, when people feel validated, even if the decision doesn't go their way, they feel like they were part of the process, and they're going to come back to the table again and continue the dialogue. Whether that's a developer not wanting to scare them away, because we don't want to do that, whether it's the neighbors and making them feel frustrated and unheard, we don't want to do that either. So it's finding that kind of win-win opportunity in every interaction, even if it doesn't end up being the way someone wants it to be. Like I said, second, understanding of the issues, again, running for council and talking to so many people, but also, I've been reading the city survey for a number of years now, and I refer back to it, I guess, more often than I remember sometimes, and seeing that data largely consistent over time. The values of the community largely kind of stay the same, because Minnetoka is kind of its core, which we're really well-known for, although some things have shifted, and that's an important thing to be aware of as well, is making sure that we are responsive to the needs of the resident, the shifting priorities in the community. And then lastly, I said, just, we've got a great staff, and I am not a land use and planning expert. And there are the people that may be that, that you'll talk to tonight, but I believe that we've got great staff, I know a lot of them fairly well, and leaning on them to both kind of teach and help guide those discussions is really an important part of the planning commission's job as well.
Great, thank you. The city emphasizes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our body of work. How does this effort intersect with the work of the Planning Commission?
Sure, that's a good question. So, when it's done well, the Planning Commission is about individual rights and community responsibility. And like, there's so much that's loaded into that, right? We have people that buy a piece of property and they want it to be a certain way. You have a community that has certain expectations of how that community functions, and who's part of the community, and how they get to have their voices heard to literally, it's literally placemaking, right? We are placemaking when we build a community, when the planning commission's involved and when the council makes decisions, we are deciding what type of community we want to be. And if we aren't doing that in the best interests of everybody, and that, that is why, like, a good planning meeting, a good planning discussion is, should be indistinguishable from a really good DEI approach, because we are trying to make space for people, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's like literal physical accessibility issues, whether it's economic development to increase our tax revenues, we can drive down our property tax burden for residents, whatever that is, making sure that we are balancing, again, make sure that every individual who lives here feels seen and heard and welcomed, and then that every group and every type of person that wants to be here also feels like they're part of the community.
Great, thank you. Final question. It's not jeopardy.
Bet it all.
Based on your understanding of the commission, what do you think will be the individual challenge for you and a challenge for the group?
Yeah, okay. As I said before, I've a great deal of experience professionally over the years, have an MBA, but that's more in kind of the communications and marketing and management side of things. I have a deep interest in planning and follow a lot of our kind of urban planning, suburban planning writers, things like that, but I'm not an expert. That being said, like I said before, we've got great staff, and we have a really awesome planning commission already. I mean, John Powers, there's no replacing that guy. I mean, eight-plus years, huge shoes to fill. He was a guy who came into it with a ton of professional experience. That being said, I believe his words when he left were, "I hope I get replaced by someone young and with spunk." And so I think I fit that characterization pretty well. But beyond that, I think there is an opportunity to make sure that the planning commission going forward continues to grapple with the hard questions. And when I watch those, those commission meetings, disagreement is the baseline, right? You have a developer who wants one thing, and the neighborhood who wants another. And you have planning commissioners who come at it from different perspectives, and hopefully they have disagreements as well, because the disagreement teases apart the issue and helps people understand where the issue actually is. Is it, what is the problem, and where are the opportunities? So I think the respect I see when I watch those planning commission meetings between the commission members themselves, like that, that makes me want to join that commission in and of itself. And then you add in the fact that the importance of those decisions and feeling like I'm actually adding value to the community, that's why I hope to be there.
Great. David, thank you.
Sure.
It's a, it's a quick, it's quick for our questions, but we got to keep her moving.
In and out. Got bedtimes.
Thanks, thanks. Yep, well, that's right. Get your kids to bed, that's a good plan.
Thanks, David.
Thanks very much for being here.
Okay.
Okay, let's do it. Let's do it. Okay. Sarissa, we're going to take a, a quick, I've got a request for a quick five-minute break, so we're going to do that, and then we'll go to the next candidate, if that's okay. Is that right? Okay. We're, we're winging it today, we're flexible. Just in a minute. Patsy, you tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready, thank you.
Okay, we are ready, so we'll go with the next candidate.
How are you?
Okay. Up there?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening.
Welcome, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Well, we're glad to have you, thank you for your interest in the Planning Commission.
My pleasure.
All right, well, we'll, we've been keeping things moving pretty well. We don't have a ton of questions for you, but we've got four. And so what we're going to do is, we're just going to go down the line and introduce ourselves to you, and then we'll just jump in. And you're, you're, well, I'm, you're David Carr, but then you've got Stephen, and do you go by Stephen?
No, I go by David. It's an old Irish tradition in the family, everybody calls themselves by the middle name, so wrestle with that your whole school year.
Okay, well, if you say David, we're going to-
I'm David, yep.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. So we'll start on my left, so up here, you've got the, across the way, is, we're all council members, we're going to introduce the council members, we'll get into the questions, and we'll take it from there. Okay.
Hi, I'm Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward One.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Kimberly Wilburn, at large.
Nice to meet you.
Rebecca Shack, Ward Two.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Brad Wirson, the mayor.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Kizzy Coakley, Ward Four.
Nice to meet you.
Deb Calvert, at large.
Nice to meet you.
Oliver Meili, Ward Three.
Nice to meet you.
All right, and then we've got our staff members on the side, we'll, we'll just keep things moving. They're good staff members, so we'll-
Sounds good.
We'll leave it at that.
Okay.
We're going to just start with the questions. Please tell us about yourself, and what in your background makes you the right person for a position on the Planning Commission?
Okay. I think probably I'll start with my attitude is one that I want to help Minnetoka plan well for future generations, thinking long-term. And about myself, and you can judge if this, my qualifications match what you're looking for or not, but I'm married, lived in Minnetoka for the last 36 years. I grew up in Richfield, and I have a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Minnesota. I went to Dunwoody and Hennepin County Community Center, because I'm in construction and went, had to learn some estimating survey and other things for civil work that I got involved in. Had my own business for a while, and then worked for five major construction companies, and I still work part-time right now as a senior vice president for one. And I've gone and gotten professional certifications, I'm a certified healthcare constructor, Construction Management Association member, a member of ASHEUS, a member of the American Society for Healthcare Engineers, I'm a member of the Association for Medical Facility Professionals, and a member of the Lean Construction Institute. And I just renewed my membership last night to the U.S. Green Building Council, where I was the original, one of the original founders of the chapter here in Minnesota about 20 years ago, that changed to a new one now. So I have some sustainability blood running in me, that's important to make sure we take care of and our climate. And I see we have a climate action plan that I was surprised, pleasantly surprised to see that we have, so thinking ahead already. My, I think I mentioned I was in construction for the last 47 years, building mostly hospitals. Healthcare is my expert, area of expertise. I'm a planner, so any job description with planning in it, I'm your guy, but you can call my references and ask them, they'll verify that or not, they will probably say so if he's, he's a planner. Managed and led six new hospitals here locally, and one in Wisconsin, one in California, one in Alaska, one in the Virgin Islands, which I helped consult on. About a thousand residential units, I was a project manager and director for the Cedar Riverside Residential Towers down there, you've all driven by on 94, which was a very big learning experience for a hospital guy working in residential, so. But residential is not my strong point, but I've had enough exposure to it. My role was as a liaison between the design team, the owners, the architects, the designers, the engineers, and the users, and even in that residential group, the security and the residents themselves. So I guess probably that's my skill set, is being able to communicate and move amongst all of the team players and members and the stakeholders, the end-users, who are actually the most important, even though I'm a contractor and builder by background. I've done a lot of planned site development work, also in industrial, and like I mentioned, a big canola plant up in Ca- Canada at one point. Have to work through all the permitting processes, I'm fully aware of, and learned the hard way on regulatory requirements. Staffing is going to be a challenge in our business now. We have to reach out and welcome everybody onboard. I'm so glad to see DEI being important now, because we need to recruit and bring in all hands on deck. And nobody knows that more than construction folks. Done a lot of remodeling projects, so I'm hoping that's an answer to your question about why you think I might be a good addition.
Thank you. So the, the Planning Commission is, is faced with a lot of difficult decisions and differing opinions. What is your approach when required to make decisions in this type of environment? I think you've, I think you've had some experience, but tell us what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I've learned by fire and the hard way in construction. I was a Minnesota court cert, trained, certified mediator and arbitrator in construction. So there were some pretty fiery disputes that had to happen between people and attorneys and real estate developers, contractors, architects, and owners, that I was able to settle. So differing opinions are important, because that's where the creativity lies. The true way to bring out the best in a team is to listen to them all, all of us, because I don't have the answer, no one person has all the answers, but if you mix them all together, you get a pretty creative outcome. Not, not every idea is perfect, but if we don't have a trusting environment, the creativity won't fall. And so I welcome differing opinions, and have had to orchestrate and mediate discussions where people do not agree, but also express their opinions openly, so. The differing opinions, however, I, I like to make sure that we're all in sync with the customer, the end-users, whichever end-users we are developing for in the Planning Commission, and find out what their priorities are first, so that all the differing opinions can be compared to their goals. So if a development is necessary in Minnetoka for a certain purpose, we need to understand what they are and help orchestrate the discussion and opinions around how it supports that mission, not just have an open-ended free-for-all. When I set up mediations and discussions, we, we set up some ground rules for discussions if there were disputes and debates, so that we could have a good discussion with fairness and equally listening to both and all points. So it's, it seems like there's a lot of priorities too to balance between sustainability, planning, DEI, infrastructure, and many of the, of the priorities, I went through the entire, thank you, Sarissa, for sending me the strategic plan, I tried to read it all through. We have a, we've got a lot of really structured, good plans in place, I'm impressed, so delivering all those is gonna be interesting.
So I'm gonna jump to the next question. The city emphasizes, as you mentioned, diversity, equity, inclusion in our body of work. How does this effort intersect with the work of the planning commission?
Well, I think, I haven't worked on a planning commission before, so forgive me if I, I need to do some learning on how to do that. But it seems like our group would need to objectively weigh proposals that we receive, I think is not part of our job, and weigh the benefits to how they will benefit Minnetoka's diverse and varied populations' needs, in compliance with strategic and comprehensive plans and goals, but also how they, proposals may need to vary in order to have a compassionate, productive approach to accommodate different diversity within people with different economic means, ages, disadvantages, or impaired groups, need to be thought of at each stage of the evaluation, because it's easy to just charge ahead and forget about those things when those are really important in our public life.
Great, thank you. Last question for you, based on your understanding of the commission, what do you think will be an individual challenge for you and then a challenge for the group?
Good question. I think the biggest personal challenge for me will be make all the meetings. I'm only working part-time as a senior vice president, but we do travel south for part of this, the winter, and so I may not be able to make all the meetings, and I know that's important to be present, but if I can't make three or four or five of the meetings, if that's a deal breaker, I might be able to fly back and be a part of the commission if possible, but that will be a personal challenge. Getting to, and I'm not a politician, so, you know, if that's a problem, you can excuse me and I'll go now, so that may be a challenge if I need to be political. And for the group, I don't, I'm assuming our group needs to guard against making short-term decisions which don't accommodate long-term impacts for the future, whether they are economical conservation measures, wetlands, technologies, economic demographic swings that we're gonna have water runoff, climate variations. I see we have a climate action plan, I'm impressed, on population diversity. So I think, I don't want to misjudge, but I guess I would just want us to make sure we go slow and lean processes, you go slow at first to go fast later, and wouldn't want to make short-term decisions that affect long-term issues.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your answers, and I appreciate your, your, just shooting us straight and your, your background and your experience, so thanks for being here tonight.
Okay, thank you for having me.
Have a good evening.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Question. Do you know how many meetings they have per year for the planning commission?
Well, typically, it's two a month.
Two a month?
Two a month, but, you know, they don't, they're, they're meeting.
And, and we've had bad, we've had bad attendance, which I hope is not a thing.
Can they ever, can I?
Deb, what did you say?
Can they do it from online?
So planning commission would need, they, they have the same meeting requirements as council, in terms of quorum and being able to participate.
So they can do it, they can do it online, though, right? Yep.
They, you're, you're allowed up to three absences per year, to go virtually, you get three per year, unless you have the new, the way new laws written, unless you have a doctor's note saying that you couldn't participate.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very similar to what we have. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. You'd like me to clip this, I suspect, yes?
Yeah, clip that on somewhere, it'll, it'll, it should capture you, if you've got, you've got a lapel there, that'll work.
Yep.
Maybe, it's good.
That's good, yeah, that'll work, yeah, we just, yeah. These are public meetings and we record them for the record, so.
Great.
Thank you. So what we've been doing is, we have four questions for our prospective planning commissioners, and we start out by introducing the council. We've got some staff members here, we're not even gonna introduce them, just go down, introduce the council, and then we'll, we'll start with the questions, so I'll start with council member Patsy.
Patsy, Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1.
Kimberly Welburn, at-large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
Brad Werson, the mayor.
Kizzy Copey, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, at-large.
Paula Romailly, Ward 3.
All right, well, we'll just get into the, and that's, Miranda is our, is our staff, part of the staff, so we've got seven council members here. So first question is, please tell us about yourself and what in your background makes you the right person for this position on the planning commission?
Well, great, and thanks so much for this opportunity to meet with you. I recently retired, and I had a career of being a professional civil engineer, followed by being a professor of civil engineering, and then I, my last 12 years or so, I worked as an administrator in increasingly higher levels of higher education, which is a very flat and complicated organization, so I had those administrative skills as well. I, with that recent retirement, I moved to Minnetoka, and my daughter is here in her small family, so I wanted to be close to them. I'm also from the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, Auber, and so it makes me, it's easier for me to get up there and to be able to be also back up in the UP, so Minnetoka was a great choice for me from personal reasons. I, though I've retired from higher education, I am really still interested and continue to contribute and to be able to serve and to be able to help, and through that service, continue to ma- to make Minnetoka my home, and I'm hoping that that would, that would work well. I think my expertise would, is a, is a good marriage, a good bridge between having technical skills and familiarity with the design process and engineering and infrastructure, but then through those administrative experiences, I think I now have a really strong ability to work in complicated organizations. I have budget, HR, I've worked with legal, I've, have managed some very complicated decisions and processes and, and certainly in the shared governance environment, that's a very flat organization. So I think that that's a good marriage and a good pairing. I, it's for those reasons I, I would hope that you would see me as a good fit, I think I would be, and that I would be able to bring some fresh eyes without preconceived ideas, and, and I think planning commission is a great way to manifest the goals and the interests of the city, and they become so visible, and to be able to help you make that difference, to be able to create the future for the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, your answer to your first question kind of anticipated part of our second question, so the, the planning commission is faced with a lot of difficult decisions and differing opinions. What is your approach when required to make decisions in this type of environment?
Yeah, those last 12 years, well, serving in these complicated environments, I was a dean of engineering and I also was a vice president, and so I carried very complicated portfolios. Higher education is, I use the word shared governance, it's very flat, it's very public, it's very transparent, and when, I worked in a regional comprehensive, so they're intimately tied to the community of which they're serving, they often call, talk about town gown. So I think I have a lot of experience working in natty, challenging situations where people have pretty strong opinions. Oftentimes, those people are the faculty and the staff at the, at the university, but occasionally the community gets involved and gets pretty upset about, or can be upset about some of the decisions that this regional comprehensive university was making. So those, sort of the backdrop of where I have been experienced in and have been successful with some, with some very natty problems. The process that I've used, I'm gonna rely, I rely very heavily on my background of being an engineer, and that's this lovely process called the design process, and it starts off with first really understanding, do you have the right issue, the right problem, well-defined? Oftentimes, you start working on something, and if you don't take a moment to say, have we scoped this out properly, have we worked with the stakeholders to actually understand what their needs are, do you know, what kind of data are you gathering, what, how are you being guided, what are your regulations? So I think, and requirements and needs, I think it's really important to, to, to make sure you've got that scoped out, and doing so with stakeholders is helpful because they'll add dimensions to that you yourself may not know about. And then from, from that process, then you go, you begin to develop alternatives, you can do that in different ways, maybe through some type of a, a group processing with sticky boards, it's, you know, sticky papers and all of that sort of thing, but to begin to develop alternatives, evaluate those alternatives, bring your experts in to provide your pros and cons, strengths and weaknesses, challenges, and then present that information to the constituencies and the people who are really caring about this and, and which are gonna be a variety of not only community members, but it's gonna be you, and it's gonna be the staff, and it's gonna, and, and then begin to narrow that down, come up with the preferred alternative, continue to communicate, lot of communicating, lot of listening, and then eventually a decision is made. But it's hopefully a decision that one starts off with the right problem that you're working on and ends up with a decision, albeit one that's not everyone's going to be happy with, but through that process, there's an education and an understanding about, and clarity about why and, and, and the goals that you're achieving, and where the challenges and the impacts maybe in the future might be. And so I've, I, that's the kind of process I would use, you know, I've, I've cut units, I've closed units, I've brought in new initiatives, I've developed new processes, and, and have been timely with that, but also within that environment of bringing stakeholders into the process.
Great, thank you. The city emphasizes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our body of work.
Yeah.
How does this effort intersect with the work of the planning commission?
Well, as I looked at the vision statement for the city about being an inclusive, equitable, welcoming community for all, regardless of race, gender, identity, sexuality, adaptability, and that, buried within that, though, and into the goals are topics around accessibility, affordability, safety, trust, and I see that the planning commission, that a manifestation of the DEI philosophy and goals can become so physical, visible, and to the, to the city and those around through that physical infrastructure. So if you have inaccessible trails or parks, that's a very visible statement that you're not paying attention to DEI, or that's not a priority for, and so I see that that's one of the manifestations of it, and that's where the intersection is. I did have the chance to read through mostly the 2040 comprehensive plan, honest, and, but there's a lot of.
That may say some dangerous things about you, but go ahead.
Right, voluntarily? Volunteered. There's a lot of DEI integration into the goals and to the vision statements of the various units, like, and I think that's some of the things that really stood out for me from there, and why the planning commission is a great intersection with that and the manifestation, the execution, if you will, of those goals, or things like in the housing, it was about strengthening existing communities, creating more diverse housing in terms of size and shape and price, and being able to better serve a much more diverse community of households. So I think that that was really great, and I think that that's, would, those are useful things and helpful to have those so well-spelled out, and the planning commission can work under that guidance. Transportation, that's obvious, you don't, you don't, you wanna not impact, you wanna make it a livable, connected city, but not have future impacts down the, down the road that are gonna impact sustainability and inclusiveness, and then I think, of course, I mentioned about inaccessible trails or, or different types of facilities, or, you know, like Williston or something like that. So I think that that's, that's a great place for planning to, to help achieve those goals versus having nice things that we talk about but never being able to manifest them.
Thank you. So our final question is, based on your understanding of the commission, what do you think will be an individual challenge for you and then a challenge for the crew?
Yeah, I, I think that, I'm new. I'm new to Minnetoka, I'm new to Minnesota, but, and I think that that's a strength in many ways, hopefully, I have fresh eyes, I'll bring, I won't have any preconceived ideas, and I don't, but I think the challenge will be is, I don't have the history, I don't have the connection with the community yet, I hope to, and I, so I don't know the history, the emotion, the culture that is a part of the city, and that will be the, I think the challenge for me is how do, how do you quickly begin to learn that? Now, I've changed jobs a number of times, and so especially as I've moved into these larger, you have that same process that happens where you, you come into a new culture and you have to learn and, and you have to adapt and you have to integrate, but still be able to get the work done that needs to get done. So I feel very comfortable that I can do that, but I think that that's, that's the, that's the first, that's the challenge for me as an individual. As a group, it is, this is work that, especially if not managed well in, in type of a process, that can be quite controversial, and I understand that from my days as being a professional civil engineer, more so than my time at the university. And I think then it's important that the commissioners on the planning commission, you know, they, they build a trust and a respect with each other and begin to understand how each other operates, so that as you work through topics and learn about topics and gather the information, there is a diversity of ideas, but there's a respect and an ability to be able to understand each other's and be able to use that as a strength. And so I think that that'll be a challenge. I also think that in addition to the board, the members of the commission being able to trust and work well with each other, it's can the commission itself also work well with the staff and the elected officials and then the community at large, so to me, those seem like some of the bigger challenges.
Great.
Right?
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
You've covered a lot of ground, so thank you in our four questions, so.
I took, I brought, you know, I was, so I was in Steamboat Springs when I got the note from, and I went, oh, great, but so on the airplane, I was like riding.
Well, I hope you got some good runs in.
I had really great steam.
Okay, good. Chalice, anyway.
All right. Thank you for the.
Have a great night, thanks for your time.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And where in the UP are you from?
Ishpamih.
Okay, yep.
Marquette.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
I know the UP.
Yeah. Oh, just, I'd never heard whatever that was you said.
Youper? You didn't know what a Youper is? Oh, Ishpamih?
Ishpamih. Ishpamih, it's a, it's a Njibwe word. Oh, okay. Okay, so there's a joke. There's an Njibwe word and it means heaven, but the sister city is named N'Gani, and you know what that means, hell.
There you go.
We were rivals.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
See you later.
There's a lot of Minnetoka's.
It is.
There's a lot.
I'm starting to be like, pay attention, pay attention.
Yep, it's, um.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You can take your seat right in the middle and put the microphone on your shirt.
How is everybody?
We're good, how are you? Welcome, nice to see you. Well, we're running a little behind, but we, we don't have too onerous a task ahead of us, we've got four questions for you.
Okay.
So we'll start by going across and introducing each of us as council members, and then we'll ask you a few questions and we'll take it from there, so welcome, nice to see you. Patsy?
Patsy Foster-Bolton.
Sorry to hear about your leg.
How is everybody?
We're good. How are you? Welcome, nice to see you. Well, we're running a little behind, but we don't have too onerous a task ahead of us. We've got four questions for you.
Okay.
So we'll start by going across and introducing each of us as council members, and then we'll ask you a few questions and we'll take it from there. So welcome, nice to see you. Patsy?
Patsy Foster-Bolton.
Sorry to hear about your leg.
Kimberly Welburn at large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward two.
Brad Weersum, Mayor.
Kizzy Cope, Ward four.
Deb Calvert at large.
Paula Rameley, Ward three.
Nice to meet you.
So welcome, and good to have you here, and we've got, like I said, four questions. So please tell us about yourself and what in your background makes you the right person for this position?
Great question. There's so many directions to go, and you, I'll be quick. I think first off, thank you for being you. One of the things I think that make this position easy or easier is because of great leadership in the city. I know I've said it before, I feel like I'm pandering, but I have a great deal of respect for the council, the city managers. We really are blessed to have you here. About me and my past would basically be, I think, the number of my skill sets from my past careers make me an excellent candidate in regards to being able to see and envision things. So if I look at a two-dimensional plan, I can easily start to develop that in my mind to a three-dimensional working facility, whether it's in addition to a home or in addition to the city. I, I know that there are a number of people that sometimes struggle with that. It's something that I do on a regular basis. It could be something as small as a park, that type of thing. I have a good knowledge base of our codes. Again, one of the reasons I have such a good respect for the city management is just Drew. I think Drew's a wonderful guy, and I've done a number of projects with him on my personal home, been able to kind of see how he works and how his process works. But because of those projects I've done at home, because of my career in the past, I've got a good understanding of the local codes. I'm not saying I'm an expert, but I have a very strong understanding of the plumbing codes, of the different codes that can remember, number of times working with a number of different inspectors and kind of going around and getting some nice compliments from our city inspectors is kind of a nice pat in the back. I deal with a number of government organizations, city organizations on a regular basis, so I understand what they're looking for, whether it's transit or city or different things that would apply to this role. I have a good understanding, good relationship with a number of people that kind of intertwined in that way as well. What else? I love to learn. There's quite a bit to learn. I'm not saying that I know everything, but I think there's plenty of opportunity to learn, and I'm really driven to learn. I enjoy problems and I enjoy working my way through problems. It's something that energizes me, and I think that's kind of a good attitude to have to this role, be able to take on different perspectives, hear different people's opinions and kind of make a good decision from finding the facts.
Good. Our next question is, the planning commission is faced with a lot of difficult decisions and differing opinions. What is your approach when required to make decisions in this type of environment?
Facts. I love facts. I love digging in the minutia. The more information I can find, the better decision I can make, the better decision I can make for everyone involved. If I can hear different people's opinions, if I can bring different information, I know many times the packets are already made by the city managers and they've always got their things pretty well buttoned down. I've had a chance to read some of the agendas and some of those, some of the paperwork on those issues. But I really like to find out the facts, make the best informed, most intelligent decision I can.
Great. The city emphasizes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our body of work. How does this effort intersect with the work of the planning commission?
I think it's a foundation to everything, isn't it? Just to have a good respect for everyone, to be able to listen to other people's views, to be able to take people into, different people's opinions into account, give them the respect that they deserve.
So based on your understanding of the commission, what do you think will be an individual challenge for you and a challenge for the group as a whole?
I'm laughing because my wife told me, it's because I'll make the meetings much longer because I do like the details. I think learning the protocol will be a big challenge, just being, I've, I've watched and sat in a number of the planning commission meetings, but kind of learning what's expected and to learn what's, kind of what the guidelines are, what, what you expect out of us and what you expect, how do things go forward? I'm assuming that this role is kind of digging through that minutia for the council and making those recommendations to the council. So I would like to know more about kind of how you would see that, what you'd like to see out of that. I think that would be kind of one of the bigger challenges. Like I said, I've seen a number of the different planning commissions that have been broadcast, and I've sat in a couple of meetings and quite energized by it. It's, I think it's fun to see that information, those requests come in and be able to, be able to kind of pull that information together and make a decision going up the chain from there.
Great. Well, even though your wife thought that you'd make the meetings longer, you, you've, you've managed to go through our questions very efficiently, so it's good to see you, Dana. Thanks, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
And we will be back in touch yet this week, so you'll, we won't make you sweat, sweat the details for a long time, but service will be back in touch. Thanks so much.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, take care. Good to see you, Dana.
Nice to see you.
No, no, he works for the Minnesota Twins.
Any more?
He was a candidate, he was a candidate, he ran, Ward one.
He's like the grounds, I don't know, that engineer.
Yeah, 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 he's come to a number of our meetings today.
Okay, that's probably.
Yeah. We went to, were you there when we went to the China?
I don't know. I don't know.
We had a meeting there, can't remember, anyway, he, yeah, he's, he's come to our meetings, yep.
That's probably why.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Let's see, I have to get organized here so we can do this properly. So.
A lizard in my mouth just a moment ago.
Not a problem, that's, that's okay, that's okay.
Audio, so, pardon me.
Make sure I've got the right list of questions in front of me.
I can give you mine.
Well, here now.
Really had to filter through the phone right here.
Okay, there we are, okay.
Go ahead.
And you are, Dan?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Dan, we are the city council, we're here to interview you for the E D A C. We've just got four questions, so they're not stump the band questions, but we want to hear what you have to say. We're going to go across and introduce ourselves, and then we'll just jump right into the questions. But thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward one.
Kimberly Welburn at large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward two.
Brad Weersum, Mayor.
Kizzy Cope, Ward four.
Deb Calvert at large.
Paula Rameley, I'm in Ward three.
Very good, well, welcome, Dan, glad to have you here. So our first question is, please tell us about yourself and what in your background makes you the right person for this position?
Okay, well, thank you for this opportunity, I do appreciate it. As background, I grew up in St. Paul, I attended the University of Wisconsin, Madison, earned a degree in accounting, where I spent the next several years working as well. Later, I moved back to the Twin Cities, still in public accounting, and then started at the University of Minnesota, getting a graduate degree, and continued in public accounting until about 1990, where I made a shift to investments in banking, working with US Bank for about 15 years in a whole variety of roles, beginning originally in lending development and finishing with the majority of my years spent in risk management activities in the chief credit officer's office. The extent of my experience included oversight and risk management of affordable housing, doing some risk management activities related to corporate lending and corporate real estate lending, and then later, as he, the chief credit officer at the time wanted me to help him with a certain area, I spent more time looking at the way they manage small business risk management and consumer lending risk management. Then, after about 15 years, I had an opportunity to join Community Reinvestment Fund, which is a local not-for-profit headquartered in Minneapolis that has a national presence in a whole variety of industries. Community Reinvestment Fund has a focus on lending to older, moderate income communities, people of color, women, and veteran-owned businesses. And the whole idea is to provide access to capital to people and organizations that don't otherwise have access to traditional channels of capital. I retired from that organization in 2020, but then spent about three years doing consulting on a variety of projects thereafter, ending that up in the fall of last year. And I guess I can bring what I've learned in the skills in evaluating projects, seeking alternatives, and overcoming obstacles, along with that, a lot of experience and a broad set of skills to the commission, or committee, excuse me.
Very good.
That plus, I'm married and my wife is Muzlatsav. We raised our two children in Minnetoka, where we've lived for 27 years, and we both look forward to contributing back to our community.
Excellent, well, thank you. In the areas of redevelopment, finance, housing, or transportation, what opportunities do you see the E D A C exploring in the coming years?
That's kind of a broad question.
It is a broad question. You can pick, pick one or.
Well, it was, doing a little bit of research and thinking about preparing for this, just trying to read through the, you know, the breadth of the economic, the E I P, I'll just call it the E I P plan. I tried to learn a little bit more about what it might have faced the committee, trying to look at agendas and other things, and the wide array of projects and issues facing the city was, you know, it's a bit, it's a bit daunting in some respects, and I'm sure you see that as well. But as I, as I think about it, this is going to be a great chance for me to learn a great deal, and in the areas that, I can throw out a couple of ideas. In business development and redevelopment, as economic patterns change, whether they be retail or commercial office, we need to understand how these changes are going to impact the city and the tax base. It's going to be important to stay proactive and continue some of the efforts and prior initiatives that have been put forth in the past, including things like thrive, open to business, and the business outreach that has been done in more recent years. With respect to housing, I think it's important to explore programs that can help continue to renew our housing stock and help reduce the affordability challenge for many of the people who might want to move into Minnetoka or continue to reside here. Only one of the current programs in the E I P is thought to have a secure funding source according to the scale that's used, which I thought a bit surprising for such an important issue. And then the third area, transportation, I'm not sure what, what, the level of benefit that might be able to be achieved over time, but with the impending introduction of light rail coming to Minnetoka and the southwestern suburbs, and the development that has occurred along the corridor, along with the opportunities to leverage that impact, can the city, you know, leverage wider access to transportation as a way of furthering economic development in the areas of Minnetoka that are within reach of the light rail service?
Great, thank you. So third question, the city emphasizes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our body of work. How does this effort intersect with the work of the E D A C?
Well, you know, first off, I think D E I is an important element in building a strong and cohesive community. It's important we understand our differences and similarities and recognize where any prior practices or standards may have failed or been inadequate to serve our communities. Recognizing the, you know, limitations of our experience is another aspect of that, and, you know, how that can lead to unintended blind spots, you know, and recognizing that I think will benefit our participation or recognizing D E I principles and practices within the E D A committee.
Thank you.
It's a short answer, but I, I just, I believe strongly, you know, in, in D E I initiatives, and was one of the focuses of Community Reinvestment Fund while I was there.
Excellent. So our fourth question is, and short answers are okay, because you made some good, really good points in that short answer, so. Based on your understanding of the commission, what do you think will be an individual challenge for you and a challenge for the group?
For me, a challenge is going to just simply be learning about my fellow commission members and, and the wide range, as I noted earlier, of development and activities that pass through the committee. I may have a lot of prior experience myself, but this is also a learning and growth opportunity for me as well. With respect to the committee itself or more broadly, it's kind of hard for me to say what challenges, you know, will be for the committee beyond maybe what I noted earlier about the diverse projects and situations and things that the, the committee faces. I imagine there are going to be many worthwhile opportunities seen by the committee for which there are going to be limited resources or they have to be deferred in favor of other projects or programs that are seen as being more beneficial to the city at that point in time.
Very good. Well, thanks for your time. It's, 10 minutes is not a very fair situation, but that's what we're faced with, and we appreciate all of the information that you provided, and thanks for being here tonight.
You bet, I'm very happy to have been here. And I can't imagine, just with all these interviews, just, you know, with so many people interested in the committees, I want to thank you for your time and your diligence in serving the city and our community.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you that it, it, it is a lot of interviews, but it's great to have such capable people.
Yeah.
Being interested in serving our city. I mean, the decision-making is going to be hard and, but thank you very much for being here.
This is always super humbling, isn't it?
It is.
Such smart people, yeah.
Well, thank you.
It's like one of those reality shows almost.
Yeah, a little bit.
How little time you might have.
That's right. Thanks, have a great night.
Just a little plant and there, over there. We could have maybe combined that we've seen her before, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure.
Hoping you can stay away. I'm about to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we've seen.
Well, we can just ask for the one question.
How can I do that here? I'm just hoping to stay away.
Because we heard answers to the.
There's got to be a better way to do this. Hi, Rex.
Hi. You're a pro at this now.
Right, as I said, I can't believe you guys keep doing this. All right, well, I won't give you longer.
Well, Naya, thank you for being here, and I'm sorry to make you wait again, and we'll, we'll go down the line again and introduce ourselves, and then, you know, I think we've heard your answers to, to three of the questions that we've asked, so I think we're just going to skip to the E D A C question and, and make this as efficient as possible unless someone disagrees with that approach. We don't need to make you go back and compare notes and see if the answer is the same way. So anyway, well, welcome. So I'll start on my left with Patsy.
Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward one.
Kimberly Welburn at large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward two.
Brad Weersum, Mayor.
Kizzy Cope, Ward four.
Deb Calvert, still at large. Paula Rameley, Ward three.
Здравствуйте, Paula.
So, Naya, we, we feel like we've been here before, and we have been, but it's nice to see you and thanks for coming in. So, you know, really, the one question that we have for you is, in the areas of redevelopment, finance, housing, or transportation, what opportunities do you see the E D A C exploring in the coming years?
Right, and I've told you guys about my background, right? And in that sense, I felt that the fit is here, and the opportunities that I'm seeing from the perspective of, so I work for a large corporation, I work for United Health Group, that's my full-time job. So I see the corporate angle of it, and you know that the Southwest Transit Station, for example, that's being developed right by our Optum headquarters, and then Optum, you know, large subsidiary of U H G is making a lot of moves in terms of the real estate. So to me, that's where, as a Minnetoka resident, where's my, where my interests are intersecting with those of what's going on with my employer, right? So, you know, we know the 9900 that's being redeployed, what are we doing with that? What are they doing with that? And how do we make sure that we, as, as citizens of Minnetoka, of citizens of Minnesota, we get the full value of this? Because to me, organizations like U H G need to be the stewards and assist the communities they're in, and that's how I see E D A C. To me, the main focus of our advisory is to be the good stewards of all available resources to us, and making sure that we get the best value for the dollar, right, in terms of our contract, and that's when it come back, comes, comes back to redevelopment, and then the finance and the housing opportunities. I, I love, you know, what we're doing, we have a lot of 55-plus communities coming up, and like I said, where my child goes to school, I see tons of development in that area. Is this what they're planning further with some of the corporate buildings that are being redeployed? And if that's the case, again, how do we, as stewards of our community, make sure that we get the best value? That we get what we're, we get what we do, we compare all the options and make sure that it's the most prudent, the most valuable, at the same time, you know, we've, we've looked into all the options. At the same time, you know, we've looked into all the options, and it brings the most benefit to our community. So, that's kind of where I'm thinking in terms of both redevelopment, and then finance opportunities, and then the housing opportunities. You know, are we doing more 55-plus communities? Are we looking into some of the, you know, accessible housing communities? When we're having the larger apartment buildings, are we doing something similar to what we see now the other cities do with a certain block percentage of, the apartments are being offered at certain rates, to make sure that we have accessibility to all of our residents across the board? So, that's kind of, you know, this is what I was thinking. These are my thoughts in terms of housing, redevelopment, finance. There's a fourth one, Brad. What was it?
The fourth one was transportation.
Yes, and that's, that's where that southwest development comes in. And I know the committee has done fantastic things. It's not like we've got a lot of, you know, issues going up, like there's with some other projects. So, we're obviously on the good track here, but again, that's kind of in my mind. As a CPA, right, I look at it from the perspective of small business owners, of the citizens, of the, the members of the community. At the same time, I've seen the large, you know, as a large Michael National employee, I also hear what their perspectives were, they're aiming for, and what are they trying to do? That's it.
Very good. Did anyone have any little follow-ups or anything for...
I actually wouldn't mind hearing the answer to number three, just because it's specific. It's DEI, but it's specific to the work of the...
EDAC. Yeah, so we'll do that. So, yeah, since you, you did apply there as well. So, I'll ask that question. The city emphasizes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our body of work. How does this effort intersect with the work of the EDAC?
Right, and as I mentioned, when I was talking about the DEI, when I think of diversity, I want to make sure that we think of diversity of all aspects. Yeah, economic, financial, ability versus disability, age, just all the different aspects of our community, and how do we make sure our community is most represented and gets the most value? So, when I think of EDAC, that's where my financial background kind of comes together with my passion. And you know that, you guys, my passion is to make sure the folks who never have access to financial counseling, who don't have access to certain things such as wealth management, talking to small business owners and saying, "Don't forget, you know, you've got to start your simple SEP IRA now, and these are the benefits that you will have." And these are things that they're not being told. They think this is the money that they're spending out of pocket and they'll never see. They don't understand the huge amount of savings that they get on the bottom line in terms of taxes and the future that it provides for them, right? So, these are the things that are, that I'm passionate about in terms of educating and making sure we all have access to financial opportunities. EDAC is where I see us being good stewards of that. And I'm repeating myself, but that's truly what I, kind of how I'm thinking about it, is making sure that all the cross-sections of our community have, have the most benefit. And that's where I see our advisories, like EDAC, ensuring. So, when we have the developers coming in and talking to us and presenting their plans, we can ask and we can make sure that we get the best bang for the buck, and all of, and that, you know, cross-sections of our community are benefiting from everything that's being proposed. So, in that sense, where I see the diversity in EDAC connecting.
Excellent. And I'm, you know, I'm going to ask you one more question too, because I realize that this last question, the answer would be different for the EDAC than it would be for the, for the DEI commission. So, the last question is, so based on your understanding of the EDAC, what do you think will be an individual challenge for you and a challenge for the group?
Yeah, I thought about that too, that it, would it be different for EDAC versus the DEI? Where in DEI, it's important to make sure we're, we're approaching it from the data perspective, because it's brand new, and we're intersecting and we're learning new things. Where from EDAC, I think it's important to understand, again, we, I, as a finance person, data is important, so I would look at the data, but that data is not brand new. It's the existing data, right? So, and it's almost like the, the history of even the 55-plus communities when they're coming in, understanding of how they've done before, have they delivered on what they've promised, and what are we getting back? What are our constituents asking for, and how are we getting the best? How are we serving the best way back, back to them, delivering it? So, I don't know, that's how I see it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming back.
Thanks for coming back.
Gosh, thank you, guys.
Very nice. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
One more.
Don't get, don't get too excited.
Yeah, I just realized, we're still getting out of here late, because we've got some work to do.
We've got one more thing to talk about, yeah.
Hi, Irene.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. It's a pleasure to meet you all. Thank you for spending time with me.
Well, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for waiting around. We're sorry we made you wait a little bit, but we're not too far behind, but a little bit.
That's okay. To be expected.
That, that is true. We squeeze, we squeeze a lot into this agenda tonight, so.
Got to clip this little thing on me.
You do.
Can I hold it? Yeah, go ahead. It doesn't want to stick with this, but...
All right. Welcome. You ready?
I am.
Very good. Well, thank you for being here. We will go down and we'll just introduce ourselves. The council members will introduce ourselves, and then we will, we'll just get into our questions, and it shouldn't take too long. So, with that, to my left...
Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1.
Kimberly Wilburn, at large.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
Brad Weersum, Mayor.
Kizzy Coakley, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, at large.
Paula Romailly, Ward 3.
And then the rest are staff, and we're just, in the interest of time, we're just going to keep moving. So, sorry about that. Not that they're not important, they are, but anyway. So, our first question is, please tell us about yourself, and what in your background makes you the right person for this position on the EDAC?
I've been a resident of Minnetonka for nearly 30 years, believe it or not, and I feel like I have a stake in seeing our community grow and thrive, which is why I'm so interested in this, this role. I've had three careers. Probably the one that's most relevant to being here is, I was an economist for the U.S. Department of Labor in Washington, D.C. I worked on the Producer Price Index Program. And for the state of Minnesota, I was a communication specialist and a work, and also involved with workforce development. As far as why I think I'm a good fit for this job, I think I'm a good fit because I have experience with grants and grant writing. I, I'm a member, I was a member of a collaborative cross-functional team a la on DEI, which is near and dear to my heart. I spent five years working on that. And I think I have a good understanding about what it takes to help engross a more diverse community. My, my degree is from the University of Virginia in Charlottesville. Again, that was in economics. As an economist, I, as I said, I worked on price indexes. I think my experience there helps me be able to do a good job of evaluating different proposals and projects and using financing tools. I think that my DEI experience also is transfer, gives me transferable skills as well, serving on that committee.
Very good. In the areas of redevelopment, finance, housing, or transportation, what opportunities do you see the EDAC exploring in the coming years?
Well, what I think would be really exciting is really working on making our community more diverse than it is. And I'm talking not only of, you know, a diverse population, but we want diverse, diversity of perspectives, diversity of thought. All those kinds of things can really grow a community. So, I would be excited along those lines. So, here, that leads to affordable housing, because if you have people from diverse backgrounds, they're going, they're going to need affordable, you know, need housing, and we want housing of all different kinds of price points. And I think that's an important thing if you expect people to want to come and live here in Minnetonka. The other thing, opportunity I think that, that we have is transportation, with the light rail coming. There's all kinds of things we could be thinking about in terms of trans, alternate transportation, improving transportation. And that even dovetails to parks and recreation with bike sharing. There's just a whole array of opportunities that I see.
Thank you. So, you touched on this a bit, but the city emphasizes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our body of work. How does this effort intersect with the work of the EDAC?
Well, I think for, the first thing we should think about is that diversity, equity, and inclusion, it intersects all that we do, not just this commission, not just the city council, but broader society. It's really important. And so, it needs to be kind of woven into our decision-making. So, when we're thinking about a particular project, we have to think, you know, how will that impact our community? Will this likely help attract more people from diverse communities or not? So, I think that, that would be an important piece of things. We want to bring more well, you know, well-paying jobs into the city when we are looking at projects. So, I think, again, we want to make sure that our city is attractive to everybody.
All right. Thank you for that. So, last question we have for you is, based on your understanding of the commission, the EDAC, what do you think will be an individual challenge for you, and then what will be a challenge for the group?
Okay, let's start with my individual challenge. I'm sure this is going to be a big challenge, looking at all that you folks do. I really have a lot of admiration, so I have a lot to learn. So, I would say that it would be really challenging for me to learn all about the different kinds of financing tools. A lot of my career has been about workforce development and labor, and labor statistics. So, I would need to be getting up to speed on that, and that, that will be a challenge for me, I'm sure. As far as the challenge for the group, I guess, I guess it's the fact that you have so many different kinds of proposals to look at, and they're so worthy, so many of them. And it's going to be really hard sometimes to pick what we think really is the best proposal to take. So, I would think that would be very challenging for our commission sometimes.
Very good. Anything else? I don't want to cut you off.
Oh.
No, I mean, no, that's good. You're, I just want to make sure that you're...
I just don't want to, I have, I just don't want to ramble on. I just, I just want to get to the basic point and let you folks, you know, go get home soon. So, I think, I think that should do it.
Well, thank you. Well, one, thank you for being here, and you're, and thank you for your answers, and, and thank you for your interest, because the EDAC is a very interesting and important commission in our city, so I wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I wish you all well. Thank you very much.
Have a great night. Thank you. Two for the EDAC and one for planning. This is a nice problem to have, but it's probably... So, let's see. Let's go back to the agenda.
We're close. We're on our last thing.
Yeah, we're, we're almost there, but, you know, I'm, I'm so good with paper.
There's a lot of paper tonight.
There is. Well, there's a lot of paper, and I made copies for myself too, so.
Grad school. Just wait.
Okay, so, we have, we are really down to 3.3C, which is the 2024 City Council Study Session Work Plan. Do we have anything more, Mike, to do on B in terms of the council staff appointments? I think we covered everything, and we need to get back to you.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. I think we covered it, and while we're sitting here, while you were interviewing, I was watching the interview. We'll try to, I'll talk to my work with Cerissa. We'll make these updates to that boards and commission appointments. Just email that to you, if we can get that out even tomorrow. I had to take a quick look at it, you know, so that way...
Yeah, and let's get it back, yeah, promptly.
Promptly. I know there's a lot of short turnaround, even like with these interviews, with the rankings. All of you were busy with other lives outside of the city work, but we're asking for those rankings to come back by 2:00 tomorrow. You don't have, what you need to turn in is really just the rankings. You don't have to provide comments. That's not required. It's really just written there for you, like you can notes and you can track the panels. But really, what, what we need is just your rankings. That's, that's the minimum. So, if you can get that turned around by tomorrow, that would be great. Because what happens then after that is Cerissa will compile the rankings, and then that, those rankings collectively will go to the mayor. The mayor will then need to look at those likely on Wednesday morning, and then he'll...
Make a decision.
Share his decisions on who he's going to recommend. Then, then we have to write the staff report Wednesday afternoon to get that turned around for the package. So, appreciate your prompt attention to getting that turned around. I don't think it's a lot to ask of you. And then, if there's anything else, we can move forward.
Let's move, let's move forward and...
All right. Well, I, I know, gosh, I think when you look at the emails, we probably stand with a bunch of emails the last few weeks, council, that there's just a lot happening as we turn the page and the calendar year. This is one of those last remaining kind of housekeeping items as we set up the 2024 Study Session Work Plan. Again, I, as you've heard me saying, Patsy, follow up. Maybe you've heard me say, this is your time. These study sessions are your time, so this is your agenda, the things that import you collectively as, as a council to spend time in 2024 discussing. So, we tried, we tried, well, we did tee this up in December, and what we're going to try to do tonight is get this all locked in weekend. And so, we'll make this an interactive exercise, and to do that...
Do you want it?
Yeah, please.
Oh. I think it's this way. Does this one you want to look first?
Yeah, thank you. So, in the, in the staff report, what we, what I outlined was, we've already had the January study session. The February study session is just a couple of weeks away. We've got a number of things teed up for the study session in February. I'll get to that here in a second. And then, in the staff report, we've identified really things that we have to lock in, just because things that have already been in motion, such as some ordinances and other projects that have been, what I would say, improper for this year. So, I just want to quickly kind of outline for you the items that really need to be inserted already into the work plan. And then, here at the end, we'll discuss what's left for space and priorities to build every day in space. If you look at February 5th, so again, two weeks from now, we'll have a study session. We're going to be teeing up the 2024 community survey questions. We have Peter Leatherman coming to engage with council, with starting that process. We have the ordinance coming back, or this discussion on the ordinance related to cannabis and public use of cannabis here in the city. Julie is going to do a quick update on our land use... Julie is going to do a quick update on our land use project, so the ZONCO consultant that we use. We're going to have a conversation on, update on that project. We also want to, as staff, want to bring forward our CAP update. So that's the sustainability project related to our climate action and adaptation plan. Time to twist her in there a little bit.
Yeah.
So that's the CAP project that staff works with to do a brief update. And then, um, thought that we've had a staff is to have a conversation with council. This is on the heels of the DDI Commission interviews, of having a conversation at the council level, just having you talk through expectations. And I think it'd be healthy for the council to determine some expectations, set some expectations. So next step, and the staff works with our DI Commission, making sure you as a council are conveying some expectations to that newly formed commission. So a lot of stuff already for February, and a lot of stuff we have to get through in a short amount of time. So that's February. March is when we start teeing up the budget, so we'll have our director presentations for Paula and Patsy. This has been a staple in our budget process the last few years of having directors come in. We also then have coming up the charitable gambling discussion. If you recall, last year, we had a couple of businesses request the city explore whether we should allow pull tab sales in the city. So we, we'll be ready to bring that back for a conversation in March. And then a follow-up conversation to the reviewing implementation plans of our public safety, police and fire, scheduling expenditures, and what that looks like for implementation the next quarter. So that's teed up for March. So again, as you can see, those are, those are full. Then in April, this is coming back then from what I just mentioned up here, land use, the land use project, then bringing back the first draft of a zoning diagnostic report from our consultant. We're also then planning to have the consultant come forward, the community facility studies. That's related to Marsh and Community Center in Williston and Glen Lake. And then also, we haven't scheduled yet, but looking to have a retreat, that's to refresh on the strategic plan that we've talked about in May. Having our 2025 budget, a formal budget kickoff discussion. So staff will, will be up for that in May. This is a, bringing back the community survey results. February, Peter Leatherman will be here, as I mentioned, but then bringing the results back into the May study session. I'll come back to this 30 minutes open time here in a second. And then in June, is when we have further conversations on the budget with the capital improvement plan and the economic development improvement plan. And then a discussion on, related to the CIP is franchise fees and the franchise fee discussion related to trail, trail improvements and the timing of all of our trail improvements, so that fits well into June. So it's possible, if you think about where some of our first openings might be, this might be one is in June, but that, I mean, again, think of a pretty heavy budget conversation. So we do have an opportunity perhaps to stack something smaller in June. July, we'll have a general housing update. There's, I think council's brought up in terms of increased rental properties, flip houses, Airbnb. So Julie, every year, does a housing update, that'll be some of the focus this year in July. So as you can see here, perhaps one or two more items in July could, could be filled. In August, this study session is pretty full with, again, the budget coming back on the, on the heels of September. That's when you have to approve a preliminary cap study, so this August study session, I would say, is largely dedicated to the budget. In September, we want to bring back earlier in the year, a city manager review process. And Miranda's got some thoughts on that coming up in September study session. October, pretty wide open right now for October. September and October are your kind of clearest months right now in terms of scheduling anything. Then in November, this is what I'd say is a book study session for the enterprise funds. So that's when we dedicate a night towards all the utilities and special revenue accounts. We do want to probably have a conversation there about ice arenas and ice arena cash flows. We'll also then bring back a rental registry update. So you just approve rental registries for, for the city, so we'll have a report coming back to on how that program has gone throughout the year. And then in December, this is where we're kind of at where we are here tonight. So strategic profile, action steps, we'll be looking at doing the study session work plan this December, legislative breakfast priorities, and then annual appointments that we just discussed tonight. So as you see, December is already pretty booked up. So bottom line is not, not a lot of flexibility yet for the year. Again, that's part of, I think, from staff's perspective, prioritization for you as a council. What you want to prioritize in terms of additional topics to bring into the conversation. And of course, if we can't get through all of these, and it's, we have to prioritize our council, I would suggest that you'll have to then add new to, to get to more topics than was being presented here. So that's a quick overview. I did tee up in your staff report a question for you, and that is, do you want to build in like a 30 minutes open time throughout the year? And the reason I just suggest that is, just looking back at 2023, we had a, you had, we all had a very full study session calendar, and it doesn't leave much room when something just comes up. Whether a resident comes to a council meeting under item eight, wants to address the council, or an idea percolates up. You go to a conference and an idea percolates up. Right now, we really don't build anything in for kind of that unknown. So I suggest you that give that some consideration if you want to build in just some free time, if you want to call it that, of just making sure you have some flexibility to address issues as they surface throughout the year. And so that's what I did here, is try to build in, in perhaps once a quarter, or a couple of times a year, perhaps in May, again, in October. And then in August, just having, making some free time set aside in a study session, doesn't mean you have to fill it. You can choose to fill it, or you can choose to end the meeting early, or whatever you want to do at that time. So that's a quick overview. I'll maybe just pause there if I can. Mayor and council, any quick questions or observations there? Otherwise, we want to get to the exercise of prioritizing.
Any comments, anyone?
I just think February 5th looks like any one of those things would be an all-night discussion. That looks like a very ambitious agenda to me.
I think it's an ambitious agenda. I think our challenge is, we've got all this stuff here, is to figure out how we can streamline some of these conversations as a council. You know, I, I, I mean, it's a challenge for me, but if we don't hit some of these things early on, then our opportunities to talk about new issues.
And like, I don't know what I would take off there. I'm just saying, you know, buckle your seat belts for February 5th, because that's going to be a long night.
So I was going to say, um, that. Yeah, it seems in previous years, like, there's so many things that are already on the schedule that it's hard to, to bring up anything new or to get to anything new. But also, like, on those budget nights, it always takes lo, I mean, and I just, I personally would rather have another meeting than to stay here till 11 o'clock at night, discussing whatever, just like, you, it, you get diminishing returns. It just is not, it, the discussion becomes less and less effective the more tired we get. I know that it might be more of a, more of a challenge for other council members to give up an extra night, so it may not be possible. But like, on those budget nights, I think adding anything else is not a good idea.
I, I agree with that. And as we sit here at 9:30, you know, I talked to Mike today and said, you know, what I would like to do is adjourn study sessions at nine o'clock. And what we don't get to, we don't get to. And you kick the can down the road. And that, that's a suggestion. You know, I don't, I don't drive the bus on that. You know, but what's a council, I mean, to your point, we are less effective after nine o'clock. And, you know, if we bite off more than we can chew, well, whose fault is that? You know, I think part of what we can do too, and probably not tonight, but, but for feedback to Mike, is look for things that we can take off this list. You know, the one is, the one on utilization of ice arenas, that was a bugaboo of a former council member who's no longer a council member. Do we really care to talk about that? If we can get rid of it, let's get rid of it.
Also, is there some things that we can just get information on, like a staff report? Like, do we have to have a full meeting on it?
I mean, I think, you know, we, there's more here. We want to try and be efficient, and there's more here than we can do efficiently. That's my concern.
And then, again, from staff's perspective, these are your meetings.
Yeah.
We're, we're here to serve the will of the council.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, staff's not trying to hoist it back.
No, no, I get that, yeah.
We know that.
No, I know, and, you know, it's not, it doesn't have a good solution. It's just, it's just that we have to, we have to decide how much time do we, as council members, have to give to city issues? And how can we, how can we do this more efficiently? And I'm, I'm looking for ideas. I'm not saying I've got the solutions.
Well, I, you know, I, one of the things I would propose, we spent last week telling everybody that we kind of wanted the DEI Commission to give us ideas on what their expectations of the commission were. And I, and I realize that's a little bit of a chicken and egg scenario, but we will have ju, I mean, they will, if that seems premature to me, I mean, I'd like to, for them to have a couple, maybe this is asking for problems, but a couple of meetings to really propose kind of what they think.
Mm-hmm. Let them be a commission?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So do I.
There's a good expectation. That's what I'm thinking on terms of expectation, because what, I think we, well, again, from my perspective, well, we would all be remiss that fast forward a year from now. And some of you might say, oh, they're doing great work. And some might say, oh, what are they really doing? And so I think to avoid what it is that you're expecting of them is to give them some more guideposts. Or some, at least put in football terms, a goalpost in terms of what, what you're expecting them to do. Maybe it is meet for a couple of months and come back, or do you want to create a work plan and come back? Do you want them to dive into work or create a work plan? That, that's kind of my thought of giving them some direction.
I mean, I feel like we're kind of saying, let's streamline this, but we're not, nobody's willing to take anything off.
And so at the risk of upsetting Jace, because he's not here, could we possibly get some recommendations from him about what he thinks? You know, so like, maybe a report from Jace Alexander about how he thinks the, the DEI Commission should, should work and what kind of, and then we can say, yeah, that sounds good, or.
Maybe that's what you anticipate that agenda item to be next week?
That's what I anticipate that to be, is staff bring, we can bring forward some ideas on it, but I think ultimately for you, it's your, it's your commission.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I, I do have some ideas. I'm already, I've thought about ideals. But kind of to what Rebecca was saying, I do think we did set the expectation that they would basically come up with work and ideals. But I kind of understand your point too.
I think we ju, it's, it's, it's like a high-level framework so that, you know, there's sort of, everyone knows sort of a general direction that, that the council is expecting without being too prescriptive about how you get there. But I just think that it, you know, like we talked about in the interviews, there is a vast array. I mean, as many of our candidates said, it, it intersects every aspect of life. And so, you know, we need to sort of, I think, I think many of our other plans sort of could inform that work because we have our strategic profile and everything. But, but that's almost like a jumping off point for DEI. And maybe, maybe we use that as sort of a, a basic structure. But I do feel like we run the risk of it. I think, looking back at the history, having gotten materials from staff about the history of DEI commissions and human rights commissions elsewhere. If, if there wasn't enough of a high-level infrastructure, sometimes it fizzled out or seemed rudderless or became rankerous because there wasn't enough general direction. So I don't want to tell them how they need to get there or exactly what they want to do, but I think there are some general expectations that we might want to agree on to just give them a jumping off point to get started. Okay, so we're not taking that one off. Scratch that idea.
Obviously, it's 30, 30, like a 30-minute conversation. Staff, Jace, staff, which involves Jace, could bring forward your staff's thoughts on how DEI will look this, this coming year. And I think it would be help, it would be helpful for staff to have the council agree to this framework. So that way, as staff, we're not leaving this new commission down a path you don't want us to take.
And can we get those materials in advance, like rather than three days before? Because one, some of these things can, that can be prepared, you know, more than three days before.
No.
Why? You're going to get them, we're going to get them.
It's going to take staff that long to get them, to get stuff together.
Just, just a couple of quick thoughts. I mean, February 5th, I mean, we're going to announce this week who the DEI Commission members are. So they're going to get informed this week. So they will likely not even have a first meeting yet. Now, having, having stuff up front before a first meeting makes good sense, but I think, I, you know, I think, thinking, you know, just briefly, what are some of the deliverables we hope to have out of a DEI Commission year one? I think that's a good idea, work plan, what, whatever. I think that, that's good. And, and then, but, but I also think that we don't want to be overly prescriptive. We want to say, okay, when are the meetings going to take place? What, you know, they, they have to, they have to kind of define who they are and what they're, with, with some direction from us and say, okay, by the end of the year, we hope to, to have a work plan and what, you know, what the, and, and perhaps some, some more detail on that. And I think if we can come to an agreement on that, that shouldn't take an overly long period of time. I think Jace is the, is the key person, but Jace and, and Mike can, can share with us what, what their thoughts are. And hopefully, we can make that a fairly efficient conversation, because admittedly, it'll, it'll come before the first meeting of the DEI Commission even occurs, I believe.
Yeah, we don't have a scheduled meeting for DEI Commission yet, though. So that's a framework. When we're going to first meet, what are some of the first agendas look like?
It comes in a pattern.
Yeah, that's good.
It goes through Mike.
Yeah.
I mean, you can maybe ask Mike to have him send us.
Question I've forgotten to answer.
Oh, that might be.
Yeah, do you want, no, you could.
We can get stuff sooner than three days before the meeting for.
For the DEI specifically? Paula?
I'm sorry.
For the DEI specifically, were, were you asking about getting stuff earlier?
Well, this, you know, background, I mean, it just seems like, anyway, I'm just new to this, so just getting all this information like two days before or three days before, and trying to digest it, if there's, you know, times where it can be delivered, you know, if we know topics that are coming months in advance.
Well, one of the things that I'm wondering for Paula is, and, and Patsy, is, for instance, we've had DEI meetings where we got information about what other cities are doing, you know, just some, some of the stuff that, the research that staff did to, to help us sort of figure out what are we doing, how big should the commission be, all that kind of stuff. They don't have that necessarily, unless they want to dug back. So that's the kind of thing that might be helpful, just so that they get the same kind of historical knowledge that the rest of us already have. And it, and it makes me feel bad because it's hard enough to read the packet, and that's additional information. But it might be good, you know, historical information.
And we can share some of that.
Yeah.
Share any, any and all of that.
So.
Just packet building in general.
Oh, just, just on the city, the, the study session, I understand there's a council meeting, but if there's, but if there's not, they're not.
We started doing this just in the last couple of years, creating this study session work plan for a couple of reasons. One, it's helpful for council to know what priorities you have, is it aligned with their strategic. One, it's helpful for council to know what priorities do you have, is it aligned with their strategic plan? Making sure you as individuals, all of you have ideas of wanting to improve the city. So that needs to get flushed out in study sessions. So this is your study sessions determine what you want to talk about as a council, we're as staff here to support you in that. So what is helpful then for the staff is we we know, our staff knows for the year when they're going to have a topic coming up for a study session. And they really address that two weeks before the meeting happens. I mean, they there's we're our staff had, we have ours strategic plan action steps, we have our own goals and indicators, we are busy all the time. And so it's just helpful for our staff knowing, for example, um, in July, Julie knows she's got to gear up for housing housing discussion in July, that she start thinking, she starts thinking about it, yes, before July twenty second. But they, I mean, the staff will stay busy and then they'll start thinking about getting ready for that in probably June, July. That's just kind of the flow of our work, but it does help, hopefully helps you, you know, just the staff to get ready for these monthly conversations. And for our staff, they know like they're doing, she's got to free up time in June to start getting ready for that.
Well, the other the other piece of it is that by having this upfront, if, yeah, we're we're not going to get the packet probably much earlier than normal, but the it gives the council opportunity to say, well, you know, when we get to this DEI commission, here's some things that I really want to make sure get covered. Or here's some questions that I'm going to want the presentations to answer. So it tees us up to give staff, you know, some direction to make to make sure that our questions get answered. Even though, you know, we may, you know, we may not have the, you know, the presentation upfront. We we do have, you know, it allows us to make sure that, okay, this is what I'm concerned about. Charitable gambling, what do I care about on that? Well, I'd like to know this and, you know, what are the experiences, what, you know, what are what concerns I have? And and what are the experiences of some nearby cities or whatever, whatever the questions are. Teeing those up upfront will make the enable staff's presentations to be more focused, I think that's a benefit.
And then is there, so is the public use of cannabis and licensing going to come up in the city council meeting shortly after February, that's why they have to be during that time?
Yeah, we already had the the, what's it called?
We introduced the ordinance.
The ordinance, the ordinance was introduced.
Okay.
Um, and so I'm assuming that we may have some updated language.
Information from the league.
Right.
Community.
And from the state.
Feedback.
Right.
And it's not really clear, I mean, the cannabis law is not exactly clear to the to anybody in the state yet, so.
But yeah, but at some point, it's going to come back before council to approve a final ordinance.
Right, right, I was just wondering in terms of like, maybe we could move that.
I was wondering that too, but I don't know.
Like, like, so some of the months that don't have a lot, we can just like.
But but the state law is there.
Right.
And so we have to grapple as a city with our responsibilities regarding
Right, that's what I was asking.
Cannabis because it's already legalized and that's part of the problem.
Yeah.
So February is probably baked.
Yeah.
As, I'm sorry, that's right. But what we really are here to do, right, and not to cut to the chase, but to layer in the other items.
Because there's other stuff, yeah.
Yeah, into those more open meetings.
So.
And and we as staff throughout the year, this comes to every, again, for Patsy and Paula's benefit, every, at the end of every study session, we're ready to get out of here. But the idea is that last agenda item in the study session is to affirm the upcoming schedule. So it's it's meant to be nimble, we we have this scheduled for the year, but things change. And so it's good to have a plan, but it's also meant to be flexible.
I mean, some, yeah, some things are pretty locked and loaded, but but you know.
Up to a point, like, there's, that's just, like, February is going to take a long time, March is too.
Yeah.
March is too, yeah, and April, that's going to be full as well.
Yeah.
May, looks like.
May is going to be.
I mean, that's budget.
Any budget.
Budget.
Yeah.
And the community survey results, yeah.
June, more budget.
I was like, holy cow.
Your first six months are pretty locked in.
They're pretty, they are, pretty much.
So we're we're not looking at those to add anything to those, we're looking to add in July, August.
July, not as much in August because back to budget.
Right.
September, October.
And the reason why the budget takes a lot of conversation, it's it's a hundred and fifteen million dollars.
Right.
And it's a big deal and it takes some time to really work through all of that.
Mm-hmm.
So let's go to maybe the interactive part of this.
You mean this wasn't?
No. It's just just me complaining was really why.
So we, um, so again, that's the council, you did this last year, it's mentimeter. And so I just want to verify in. Let's just verify the list that you have all brought forward. I think everyone's kind of brought items to the list, oh gosh, tough to read, isn't it?
It'll show up on your phone, though.
Yeah, we can see it.
So if you want to use your phone, some of the, first, let's just confirm. Why don't you, well.
Or you can do menti.com.
It's either your phone with the QR code or with your iPad, you can use menti.com.
Okay, mine.
Do you have it loaded?
Oh, come on, I must not have internet, leave that up for a minute.
Or you can type it in on your iPad, too.
It's just that I don't have Wi-Fi, I'd rather do it on my phone so I can look at my iPad.
So before you start entering any data, so just, let's just pause before you push any buttons.
Mine's not coming up yet.
Make sure we get everyone on there first. You're in, are you in? Brad, are you in?
I'm in, yeah.
I'm in.
Kizzy, are you in? Kizzy's in, Paula, are you in? Everyone's in?
Yep.
All right, so this this is just a summary of those items that that are on mentimeter. There's more of a description in your council packet. There are seven items listed up there that we suggest you prioritize. Before you do that, council, is there other items, did we capture all these correctly? Is there other items that you wish to bring up, um, that you want to add to the list to for consideration?
For the study session?
Correct, so before you start, so my point is before you start ranking these or not ranking, but prioritizing them, is this list complete? It's kind of, say your piece or forever hold it or whatever.
Okay, my brain's not working enough, I think so.
So we've got.
I think that's a pretty good list.
Wage staff protection that's come up, so, um, a conversation on wage staff protection, there's been issues for having having conversation for boards and commissions, getting, providing perhaps more direction to boards and commissions. We we have some space on study sessions for National League of Cities, League of Minnesota Cities conferences. We're very active, you as a council are very active at in those, and so coming back and sharing data is important.
Can we submit?
If you're ready to submit.
Is it, is it people submitting already?
People are submitting already.
All right, well.
So you select the ones that you think are, select the ones you want to talk about?
How much?
Maybe it's all of them, maybe it's some of them, maybe it's one of them.
So I think livable communities, that was my contribution, just so you don't have to look at the packet, it was more about smart growth and, um, smart economic development and smart growth, so compact design and things like that all, which touches affordable housing and economic development and other things. So that's what that should, a short term for.
Done the war, right, does that say six?
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, s- waiting for one more.
There we go.
There we are.
Okay, so it looks, uh, looks like a majority, we have three items with a majority, um. We don't have, we don't have to do it here, what I can do is let those three items plug those into the schedule we just looked at. And then bring that back to the council for final approval on Mondays, next Monday, so that we use a council sign off on it. And then with those other items, even though there wasn't as much support, we'll keep those on the list, and if there's everything that frees up or something that drops off, those certainly don't just go away. They'll still be there for your consideration.
Well, and if there's an opportunity within another conversation, like I know there's money regarding potentially Emerald Ashport. Are you never going to guess who voted for that, but, um, but that that might come in in another budget or natural resources.
Well, well, I think that's that's the thing, I mean, these these items are items requiring discussion. That that doesn't mean if they're not going to be discussed, they're not part of the city's plans. You know, I mean.
Right.
I mean, some of them are more controversial than others, I think the ones that are more controversial deserve some conversation or, so I, you know, I.
Right.
But this is probably good direction.
So the three items that I will plug back into the plan are identify issues that you can share for on boards and commissions. I know like drive-throughs came up a number of times, having a sustainability commission study drive-throughs. If there's something for other boards and commissions, you would assign to them, you know, we'll get that scheduled. Uh, we'll plug in a conference scheduled debriefs, because I think that's been valuable, I know I've chatted with many of you that have come back from those conferences. I mean, you should get great ideas, but I think it would be helpful to formalize that in in this setting. It's helpful for staff as well. And then the last item listed there is then having a conversation on creating roles and responsibilities for our, some of the groups that we have in the city that are are more active and and want to be more engaged. So I think setting some parameters and conversation around that will be helpful. So we'll get those teed up, um.
Nice job on the mentimeter.
That's pretty slick, isn't it?
And so I'll look at, with those three items, we'll get those plugged in, I'll look at July and September and October. And then as the year progressive progresses, we'll have, we'll keep those other items listed and noted, and if there's space to plug those in later, we will do that. You will look at that. All right.
All right.
That's helpful, council, again, this is your plan, is there any other, Brad, do you have anything?
No, I think we're good, I I think we're good, thanks, everyone, I mean, it's another long night, sorry about that, we're going to work really hard on making study sessions and at a.
I think there was a lot of extraneous conversation today, I thought, I honestly, I thought we did a good job tonight, so.
Yeah, interviews is, yeah.
People are like answering a question and you don't want to cut them off in the middle of their.
There's 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 some truth to that.
We're done.
Oh, thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, then, just to confirm, are you, I'll weave in those thirty minutes, what I call free time, or?
I think it's a great idea, but but I'm not sure, I'm not sure we'll ever have it. I think it's more aspirational than than than
Yeah.
Yeah.
Real.
I do too, yeah, I don't think we're going to get, I mean, we may not get to the the ones that have more than three votes.
Yeah.
Yeah, next one, we will bring it back.
Thanks, Teresa.
All right, are we, are we good?
I think, anything else?
I have one other quick thing if I can.
Okay, Mike's got, go ahead, Mike. Mike, what's up?
Real, real quick, and already get out of here, so just, um, a couple of things for for you to think about, um, one's just a comment. Staff will work, um, let's see, harder this year at making sure council meeting agendas can stay in about a two and a half hour window. So we'll, we'll really pay attention, not that we weren't before, but we we go through those agendas at our staff meetings. Really try to minimize agendas where we see it's going to be big, so really trying to keep meetings to two and a half hours tops. Will be our goal at the staff level, so we'll try to manage those agendas as they come from us to you. And then the other thing I just want to mention on study session, I mentioned it to the mayor earlier when I met with him, another consideration is if you're looking to do two and a half hour meetings for study sessions, is there an interest to even start them sooner? You you do, they're already scheduled for the year, you pass that out a resolution every October, so passing Paul in October, you will approve the meeting schedule for twenty twenty five. So last October, the council approved this year's schedule, and it's always been six thirty start times. I can tell you, St. Louis Park, I was talking with the city manager over there the other day, and they're looking to move their study sessions to an earlier timeframe. Just start earlier, get done earlier, and so.
Well, we did that, we did that the other night, I mean, we started at five thirty rather than six thirty and, uh, I mean, I don't know, I I want to be cognizant of people who who work and, you know, can you can you get here by five thirty and is that something that works for you, but but.
Or six o'clock, I mean.
Yeah.
Even if you want to start at a six o'clock for a study session, go six to maybe eight thirty. Again, it's, you can do it if you want, you have the power and authority to change your start times. You can stay for at six thirty for very. But there's nothing preventing.
So.
I mean, I don't mind starting earlier, I just don't want to, I don't want to stay later.
No, no, we don't want to do both, exactly, we don't want to start later and and later, we know, we want, I mean, the objective is to get done at a reasonable time.
Yeah, I'm okay with starting early, uh, earlier, I mean, but for folks that work, they have to.
Yeah, I mean, if.
There are some nights where I work, um, Wednesday nights, I couldn't start when I'm when I'm working, I couldn't start before six thirty.
All of these are scheduled on Mondays.
Exactly, Mondays I could start really anytime.
After February, I'm good with whenever you guys, so February I can't, I'm six thirty from the other side.
Okay, well, let's let's collect the information and come back and not make a decision tonight, but I think, um.
Yeah, you don't have to make a decision tonight.
But I think, give that some consideration and look at, look at your schedules to see, okay, if we were to do this, what are, you know, is it workable or is it not? You know, again, we're talking regular regular meeting nights and, you know, getting an early start would be nice and the goal would be to get done earlier, not to extend our meetings.
Right, start at six, be done at target eight thirty.
And that would just be the study sessions?
Just the study sessions.
Yeah, that sounds.
Oh, just the study sessions, oh, because the council, the council meeting is not going to change.
Well, I mean, we could do that too, but I I'd say that study sessions are a good place to start and then see how that works and then maybe it grows from there.
Yeah, you don't get as much community, um, attendance, so it doesn't affect people, your resident as much, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that sounds good.
I mean, now that I, you know, I'm working hybrid, getting here, it's six, isn't as much of a challenge as it was trying to get, finding my way.
From, yeah, no, that's exactly.
That's what I was wondering, I was waiting for you to speak up.
Yes, I mean, generally speaking, but that's, I do occasionally have to go into work on Mondays, so, you know.
All right, I probably want to adjourn now, Mary.
Yeah, I think, okay, are we done? All right, we we will, we will call it a night, thank you all, we are adjourned.